Since it's 5 o'clock, I'll open the Charter Township of Comstock Planning Commission Meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the pledge. If you'd join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda. Kyle or Casey, any changes? I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the Comstock Charter Planning Commission Meeting, November 13, 2025.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes on October 9, 2025.
I have four misspelled words on this minutes here. Commissioner Kreister's last name was not spelled correctly. Page 4, line 40. Page 5, line 20. Page 5, line 24. And page 6, line 10. It should be spelled C-R-I-T-E-S-E-R. I make a motion to approve the October 9, 2025 minutes meeting minutes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the October 30th meeting minutes. Any changes or adjustments to that? If not...
I'll make a motion to approve the October 30, 2025 meeting minutes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Now, citizen comments are for things other than the items on the agenda, so please don't make comments about the items on the agenda. They won't go into record if they're not spoken during that time.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to speak to that further?
Yeah.
So for the general public and anyone in attendance, we have public hearings tonight, so if you would have an item you'd like to talk about during that public hearing, it is more applicable for your comments to be under the public hearing topic itself. We still record comments throughout the night, even if it is during the general public comment period, but to add more weight to it, we would request that you speak during the public hearing part. Again, you are welcome to speak during any public time, but if you're seeking to add more weight to the item on the agenda, there are four public hearings coming up throughout the night, so.
So at this time, we're open for public hearing, but first...
Public comment.
Huh?
Public comment.
Citizen comment, excuse me. A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make appointments with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
Hi, Tammy Keeler. I'm not going to give my address. For one thing, you've got to take that chicken thing off here. You guys got more important things to talk about. And Buck Sherwood should not be involved in this for the fact he is too close to the people with the company. And another thing, we are doing something about this. We are calling senators. At 427, 4027 and 4028 has already been through the House. And as citizens, we have the right to vote on this. This will give us our rights to vote on this battery plant, not just all of you, everybody, the residents also. We don't want it. And why build another housing development if you're going to put this in? You put this in, nobody's going to want to live in Comstock. This battery plant needs to go. You guys have to get it out of here. And why are they... They already sold 50% of their company. I have a document right here. They already have court cases pending against them. We don't want this battery plant here. Maybe you guys didn't know that. I do have the article on my phone if anybody needs to see it. People are losing their stock in this. They have given up their pensions, everything like that. It even says that in the document. They lost everything that they had because of these people. We do not want this here. We do not need it. And why build something more in Comstock? People are selling their houses now, trying to sell them, but people hear about this battery plant going in, especially a half mile from the school. They're not going to sell their houses for value. People are already going to pull their kids out of these schools. You don't have to worry about the new STEM because there ain't going to be no kids going there, so you might as well not finish it. It's only a half a mile away from these schools. You guys are just ruining Comstock if you push this through. You are not thinking. You are not reading the articles. You are not going, getting the court documents, nothing. I also have them on my phone. So, and they sold half their company to Scotland. Why? And why are they pinpointing Michigan? You guys are... I've already showed you the map. Why are they pinpointing here? We don't want no foreign stuff in our town for another thing.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? If not, then I'll close citizen comments. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is the Upjohn Institute Housing Discussion. This is a presentation from Upjohn, and it's going to take about an hour to an hour and a half. If you want to see it, fine, but if you're not here for this, you might not want to stay until... Come back later. But that's up to you. So...
I'm here ready. I didn't realize the extensive other agenda items, so if we want to modify or abbreviate in respect to all those are here, I'm happy to do that. I do... The discussion was mainly to pick up where we left off with our last conversations. I presented at this meeting a few times with the housing plan results, so if I was to present that again, it would be repetitive to what I've presented a few times before. So, you know, if I am happy to kind of pick up where we left off with the draft goals and objectives in more of an abbreviated fashion, if that's helpful. I... Yeah. There's going to be a little bit of like a leapfrog and a disconnect because we're not going to review, you know, all of the stuff we've previously discussed.
I think you can start there, and then we could ask questions about it if we're confused about anything. Go ahead, Bob.
If I'm correct, the other public hearing was posted at 6 o'clock, so we cannot do that before 6 o'clock anyway because of the timeframe. It was posted at 6:00. We started the meeting at 5:00, so we could do more of this.
To do this.
So, so the public hearing for the Redwood land thing cannot happen until 6:00 anyway.
Okay.
If I'm correct.
So we do have time.
Okay. Well then, I am going to open my computer. So, and for, you know, I do have some handouts.
Can we get it on the overhead?
Well, what would you like? Which part would you like? So I do have a summary of the presentations to date. If anyone, while they're waiting, would like to review that. This is the housing information. I will not be presenting this today. I have presented this a few times before. Happy to answer questions on it, though. We're going to be talking about some of the goals and strategies based on some of this information within the plan. So, I'm going to just let those here. If you are interested to stay and want to grab some or pass them off to your row, feel free to do so. I also have the modifications from our last discussion on this topic. Hopefully you were experiencing them maybe now, but there's some comments here. It's the same... Yep, it's the same that you had at our last discussion. We're just going to pick up on a different spot within the list. So, draft goals, a township... I believe we left off around, made it through goal 1 and goal 2. I think we were halfway through goal 2. So, our draft goal 2, a township where housing contributes to safe, desirable, environmentally responsible, and sustainable community. And in this, we have two or... We have two, three objectives. One that deals with health and safety of neighborhoods and proximity to transportation, one that deals with renovations of existing homes, and another one that deals with a mix of different housing types and quality design and appropriate scale for the character of the neighborhoods that respect existing residential features. So under each of those objectives, we have some strategies, and we, I believe, left off around, I believe, the second one. So I'm on goal 2, objective B. And the wording can change. All this is draft. This is all part of the discussion. So B is promote and facilitate reduction of energy, water, and waste in new and existing housing, but that probably also includes the repair components as well. So funding housing repairs. We have a new one that was added under B, so there's strategy 1 and then strategy 2, which elaborates on owner-occupied housing and repairs for existing homeowners, like roofs, windows, weatherization, which coincides with existing weatherization dollars and Michigan saves opportunities in the first strategy. So I just wanted to bring note to that. But other than... So is there any questions on objective B? I can go through and read all of the five strategies underneath that. We can remove them. We can modify them. It's really up to you at this point. So, we have, I'll go on and read the third strategy, encouraging more environmental design and zoning approvals. So increasing the capacity for water infrastructure, like native grasses or allowing permeable pavement in large parking lots, or incentivizing more trees within parking lots, as well as rain gardens or bioswells to help contain water and runoff. So different approaches to helping manage water systems. And then the fourth strategy, and this is all tied to, you know, housing development. So this would be a new, newly-built housing in multiple forms. These, you know, incentives could be applied. Strategy, allowing density bonuses or other incentive programs for green certifications. And it lists all of the different certifications, and then requiring recycling percentages for demolition, as well as creating opportunities for homeowners to have composting facilities if desired, and maybe even partnering with other municipalities who have already started some of that work. So those are the, kind of the more energy-efficient, green components that are tied and connected to housing structures that are on that first list. Any... Any comments? Or should I keep going?
I have a question and a comment. So I think just to what you highlighted for number 2 under B about some of the... I remember, I recall, like, our conversation that that was something we were really excited about, was finding ways to help homeowners with those repairs and things. So, great, love seeing that there. Question on strategy number 5, requiring minimum recycling percentages for demolition. Are we talking about specifically for, like, larger-scale developments? Or are we... Okay, so not like...
Yeah, only large-scale developments.
Great.
And that would be if you're taking down, like, a large building. So not for a single family, but not for the individual homeowner, but for corporations.
Yep, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions?
What is multifamily parking on strategy 3 there?
Yeah, so if they're in the areas that are allowed more of a concentrated housing form, you're going to have some type of parking lot. So this is identifying that if you are going to have a big parking lot, incentives could be made to see more tree coverage, to keep more of that rural, natural character within. And so it's more of identifying how those more green elements would be incorporated to a, you know, cement application, a large cement application, pavement.
I like the suggestion of a permeable pavement, and I don't know how that works in our ordinance. We'll have to look at that.
Yeah, and that's kind of the question. Are people allowed to do it? You know, it's not everyone's going to want to, but is it allowed? It can be more expensive, and not all developers are going to be interested in it, but it can help with your water management greatly if water is managed on site with rain gardens or bioswells or native grasses where there's already going to be something green, you might as well have it work harder for you. So that's really all that strategy is saying. So when you're doing if and when and where, you know, it's not really dictating, it's just saying, hey, when these, if and when a larger project happens, we're going to make sure we're incentivizing the... And that the zoning doesn't currently restrict these types of creative adoptions to paved parking lots. That's essentially what strategy 3 is saying.
Any other questions?
So I'm going to go on to strategy C under goal 2, and this is promote livable neighborhoods with a mix of housing types and incomes, high-quality design, and a scale and character that respects unique residential neighborhoods. So this is, you know, how do we respond to the survey results with the allowing more types of housing at different price ranges within the existing infrastructure or in, you know, appropriate locations? And so strategy 1, 2, 3, and 4 basically look at how do we expand allowable uses within existing zoning and include, you know, broader housing types? So basically allowing the zoning to be less restrictive, and we kind of narrowed it down to R1A and R1B have some of the most room to be less restrictive and expand the housing types that are seen within that area. Strategy 2, zoning should reflect measures to support new construction with good quality design, scale, and character. This one added a little term about form-based codes for hybrid zones or neighborhood infill. So being mindful that if we are adding a, you know, a duplex to a single-family zone, that it's going to look like, you know, you can say, okay, we want it to look like a single-family home from the outside, so that the look and feel and flow matches the character that exists within the neighborhood, and, you know, can be kind of... A granny flat is relatively easy for neighborhoods to adapt and work with multiple different family types. So strategy 3 is tied to also, you know, in the case of new developments, being mindful of additional traffic, and so encourage traffic calming measures for new and existing roads tied to these developments specifically. So, and there's a link provided in what does it mean to have a traffic calming measure, but essentially, how do we make sure that neighborhoods still have safe places for kids to walk and play and people to cross the road as needed? And then the fourth strategy in this objective is if a new project is taking place, it's incentivizing exterior common area lights to be LED or dark sky approved lights for new developments or updating roads next to those developments. And that essentially speaks to making sure the lights are shining down instead of out into the sky. So if you're updating the light, just make sure it's directed in the same, in the appropriate direction of what we're trying to see, and this will improve the preservation of the night sky, so stars and things that people generally enjoy in rural environments. So that says, you know, keeping with that character as you do build, being mindful of all the things that people love. So that... Any questions on objective C under goal 2?
I have one. For strategy 1, expand allowable uses in existing zoning, R1 and R1B. Currently, the only housing allowed is single-family homes, and then duplexes are special land use, or, yeah, special land use as is an ADU. What else would we want to... What else could be added to that, those zones to allow for more flexible housing?
You said, right now it's single-family, ADU, and...
So ADU and duplexes are special land use permits required.
Okay, well, it could be by right then.
Okay.
So it'd be, yeah, removing that barrier of special use and just making it by right would be applicable?
I think that was kind of some of the conversation we had, right? Was like finding a way, especially for, like, multi-generational households, to be able to, you know, try to have a way that you could add a granny flat or something like that, right?
Yeah, a place for your, you know, older child to live in, or grandma or grandpa, or, you know, another family member to kind of help with some of the housing burden.
Got you.
Any other questions on that category?
I've got a question.
You can't take it.
The public is not allowed to speak at this point.
I'm happy to address that later.
You can speak after we have...
So I'm going to move on to goal 3. And then there's, goal 4 is much shorter, so this is, you know, the majority of the... We have, you know, gone through the majority of goals, but goal 3, a township that values usable open space and the preservation of natural features. So this is where we talk about the combination of how do we grow mindfully, given that there is always going to be pressures for change, but how do we change in the way that fits the character of the community? So we have two objectives. One is balance competing demands to create housing options and preserve open space. Objective B, develop standards in housing developments to embrace natural features. So under objective A, we have three strategies. One being to create incentives for developments to add usable open space that connects to existing natural areas, including buffers, parks, preserves. Incentives could include, but not limited to, you know, height bonuses or lot widths with cluster development. So essentially saying, if you have a park and there's a development proposed next to the park, you know, there's ways to kind of incentivize and limit either the view from the road with cluster development or accent, you know, adding to the existing park infrastructure connectivity of green space with a cluster development. So in the cluster development example, it essentially means that, you know, you're... Well, you can choose, but you're prioritizing two things. You're prioritizing, yeah, we need additional housing, but maybe instead of giving everyone five acres, they're going to have, you know, one and a half, and we're going to take those extra 10 acres and make a park, you know, for everybody to enjoy that will connect to existing green infrastructure, so that we have more connected green infrastructure, which allows wildlife to expand and grow, and then we get to see more plants and animals. Strategy 2, adjust... This is, we added the PUD because we talked about the PUD not being as flexible last time, and so we thought it lived here, but it could go another spot. So adjust the PUD to be more flexible for creative form and design. And I just put in, you know, parentheses, neo-traditional design, which is something that often gets put into a PUD, but design that is more alignment with community connectivity, allowing people to engage through their front porches and be connected through a more of a neighborhood, traditional neighborhood feel, which sometimes isn't allowed with current setbacks in existing neighborhoods. So just... And then 3, under the same objective, is prioritize housing close to existing infrastructures such as sewer lines or planned or PUDs, corridors with amenities. This is actually, it's only one strategy, but it's a pretty important strategy that has been a really big conversation across the nation about making sure that municipalities have a great rate of return and aren't running themselves financially into the ground. And how do they do that? By utilizing existing infrastructure. The more we have to build roads and... The more we have to build roads and new infrastructure, the more we are going to be spending in the long term. So sometimes you have to, and that's okay. But if we can utilize existing sewer lines, water lines, existing infrastructure, then that is economies of scale and a great ROI for the municipality and for the community. So prioritizing, you know, these existing corridors where there's already amenities is a smart financial decision and also a trend that many communities are doing across the nation and the world. So those are the three for that objective. Are there, Objective A under Goal 3? Are there any questions for those modifications, removals? Okay, I'm going to, Objective B, develop standards and housing developments to embrace natural features. So this is creating incentives. Basically, if we're going to be, you know, creating something new, let's make sure that we're doing it. So we are preserving that natural look and feel. So incentives for tree planning and landscaping programs for existing owners or even landlords for renters. And this could be done through neighborhood associations. So I know you don't have a ton of those, so that's probably another goal right there. If you want neighborhood associations, or maybe there's neighborhood Facebook groups, but a way for people to connect and collaborate on projects and an avenue for possible grant management through different incentives. Strategy 2, provide education and outreach on native lawn options and seed mixes. Ensure to include cues of care to weed out any unproductive interpretation of this regulation. Define weeds, so typically, you know, poison ivy, poison oak, and grasses to differentiate native flowers that can grow taller than your ordinance of eight inches. So just being very specific about what's intentional, what's maintained with cues of care versus what is neglect. So that ordinance, that nuisance ordinance can be kind of fine-tuned. And we get the result we're looking for with seeing more of our nature without, yeah, without it looking too messy. Strategy 3, new housing developments. And so, yeah, if there's a new housing development, maybe this a little bit, this might be a repeat. New housing developments, integration of rain gardens, trees in parking lots, native plants, bioswells, update site plan requirements. So that might be a repeat, maybe we just need it in one spot here. But essentially, we're saying, hey, in new developments, let's make sure that they are considering these things when they're adding their hardscapes. That is all for Objective B. For a township that values open space and the preservation of natural features. Are there any questions for those three strategies under Goal B?
I will say, I'm a fan of number 2. Because as it stands, I'm not sure if you all know this, our ordinance for noxious weeds counts for everything except for trees. So when Dakota goes to enforce, if there is a garden full of flowers that are over eight inches, it may have to get taken down. So I don't know if that's something we want to look at pretty quickly to adjust. Yeah, so even like tomatoes are tricky because it's, our ordinance says, anything that's not wooded cannot be over eight inches. And tomato vines go over eight inches. So I think that's an important strategy for us to work on pretty soon.
How do you control that without them being all weeds?
That's how it is right now. Like even if people did wildflower lawns, that's a weed.
Common sense.
Yeah, but, but, so if we get a complaint from a neighbor saying, hey, their vines are over eight inches, or even people who want to do, what is it? Like morning gories on a trellis, that's a weed.
Yeah, we need to address that.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. I have a, I have a quick question for you. You mentioned possible grant management for item number 1. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so in, there are programs that could possibly expand. So like the Building Blocks Neighborhood has grants that will give money to plant trees in neighborhoods. And currently, multiple neighborhoods are using that, those grant dollars in the city of Kalamazoo. And I don't know if that particular fund is limited to a certain geographic area, but it's worth exploring and investigating if it could expand. And if there's neighborhood associations that want to take that up, then, you know, there could be dollars tied to that, so.
Cool. It's interesting because we also have concerns of, we've talked about site plan requirements with trees because we worry about trees falling and impacting power lines.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of a
Yeah, yeah.
challenge there, but...
There's different kinds of trees.
Right, and style is going to be important when choosing a tree. There are more trees that are like prone to that type of, but also as we lose some of our older trees, we want to replace them. So there is kind of a cycle of, everyone loves a neighborhood with, you know, big trees as long as it's not impacting their electrical lines, for sure, yeah. Any other comments? Okay. Goal 4, a township that collaborates to support housing opportunities without discrimination. So this particular one has, well, I guess four, four objectives, but really only maybe seven different strategies. This one's main intent is to support a wide range of things, such as Objective A, aging in place, B, equal housing opportunities. So legal, making sure people know their legal rights. C, support an adequate supply of transitional or permanent housing services and support housing first initiatives. So I'm going to start with A, support aging in place. So we have Strategy 1, support local zoning that is appropriate for older adult housing options such as accessory dwelling units, visibility standards, zero step, live-in-place, et cetera. Design standards and provide incentives for new developments to meet those standards. Visibility, zero step, they're all terms that reference this notion that people should be able to age in place. And that typically means that doors are wide enough for wheelchairs to come in and out of the front door and the bathroom. It also could mean that washer and dryer is on that first floor. So any amenities, their main bedroom is all available on that first level. So as someone ages or if they get injured, they're still able to live in their home without much difficulty. It's kind of a no-brainer, I think, as we have an aging population and as, you know, our health is never guaranteed. It's a smart way to build. So ways in which we can make sure that we're steering any new development to be conscientious of this is what Objective or our Strategy 1 under Objective A is about. And then Strategy 2, develop or enhance local aging in place education and research for older adults. So essentially working with the entities that are already doing this work, area agencies on aging or AAA and other community servants agencies. So building those relationships with the experts in the region. And then the third would be support programs aimed at transitioning older adults out of nursing homes as medically appropriate and into housing where they can receive in-home care services. So making sure that there's, you know, if someone is ready, that that transition is eased with information, maybe at a community center or other ways to get connected to nursing homes and options within, within a short drive of the community. I'm going to stop there. What are the questions on those? Or modifications or removals? Okay, Objective B, support equal housing opportunities. This is a combination of things, creating an anti-discrimination ordinance that applies specifically to housing. For example, federal law prohibits landlords from charging higher security deposits to people with wheelchairs or families with children. But I don't know if renters know this. So, you know, the law also requires landlords to allow reasonable accommodations and reasonable modifications as needed for people with disabilities. And it also prohibits discrimination on the basis of income. So, so a landlord couldn't just say, oh, I don't like, you know, that you're in a wheelchair or I don't like that you are getting this source of income. That would be a form of discrimination. So there's a lot of renters who aren't aware of this. And so there is kind of a knowledge and outreach that's needed tied to kind of making sure your community is safeguarded from some of these things. And the next second one is establish a library of resources to inform residents of their rights. So this is kind of an expand, an expansion of that same concept. And that is something that could be developed and shared either at the community center or at the community development. That is all for B. Okay, I'm going to go on to C. Support an adequate supply of transitional or permanent housing services throughout Comstock that are appropriate and meet the specific needs of those who are housing insecure in a township. So there was a lot of feedback on this, on the housing survey we completed about those who are currently without shelter. And ultimately, we, you know, it's a county-wide issue. It's something that's a hot-button issue throughout the region. And we're looking at, you know, making sure that each community has a way to be connected and support the work that's ongoing. So in this particular strategy, we have support the creation of a minimum of 10 transitional or permanent housing opportunities in Comstock Township by 2035. This can be obviously modified. This is just an example of something that would be applicable based on your population and the demand of this type of supportive housing. The trend now is really to not concentrate permanent or transitional supportive housing opportunities, but to make sure that people of all types can find housing within the community that they've been living in and find their needs. So, any questions on that one? That's short. There's no other strategies under that objective. And then D is support housing first initiatives in Kalamazoo County. So Kalamazoo County has been doing a lot of work tied to the homeless population. So really, it's making sure that the township is creating working relationships with everything that's happening. The Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care, the shelters, and all the other nonprofit partners that are providing temporary housing for those in Comstock Township. And I was also told that there's a new homeless committee. So thinking of ways of how we can continue to support that new committee and ensure that it is, you know, successful in connecting to the existing resources and partners within the county to limit those who are, you know, wandering around without shelter, especially during the winter. That is all of the draft objectives that I have for discussion at this time. Happy to answer any questions. We also have a survey that I think went out to help us prioritize some of these. Prioritization is mostly for staff. But if there is one that you don't, that you think is really not appropriate, please let me know and we can, you know, have a discussion about removing it entirely versus just moving it to like the fifth priority. But the five levels of priority are to hopefully, you know, make a manageable approach to addressing some of these goals in a reasonable fashion. Typically, plans last for five years. So that would mean, you know, six to seven different strategies per year, four, five years, based on the number of strategies we have now, which is, which is a lot. Some of them are going to be bigger than others to tackle or to meet. So that prioritization is going to be really helpful because it's going to give us an idea of, yeah, how to manage workflow and, and what's truly the most important based on everything that's going on right now, so.
Are there any questions on what she just presented us, Joseph?
No question, but I wanted to thank you. I found this very interesting and I think it created a lot of opportunities for us to, to work on some of those objectives.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And yeah, feel free to follow up with any additional questions and follow the links within the text provided for more information on some of those incentives. I appreciate your time and conversation. And we will follow up with more details on on the last portion of the housing plan.
Yeah, I was going to ask Emily, is there anything that's needed from us or the steering committee to help get the housing study cross-page?
The survey, the prioritization survey is the biggest thing.
Okay.
And then based on how those responses are, we might need to, you know, loop back if there's any questions or sticking points. And then we can have another discussion, as many as you would like, really. But that survey is the number one.
Perfect, thank you Emily.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is 256 Van Brugen Site Plan Review.
The site plan, the site plan review was not noticed, so we're all set to act on that?
Yeah, we're good.
And discuss tonight. 46.
The next one we can't. Kyle, would you like to take it from here?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the township has received an application from Watts Development to construct a 10,000-square-foot indoor baseball training facility at 256, is it Van Brugen, Brugen Street? It's currently zoned LM, so light manufacturing. Indoor recreational facilities are permitted within the LM district. So as we typically go through our site plans here, we have different standards we need to look at. One being zoning and use. The subject site itself is currently vacant with it being zoned LM, light manufacturing. To the east, south, and north are all parcels also zoned LM, light manufacturing. And then to the west is property that is zoned R1B, single-family residential. There is schedule regulations, which is outlined in Section 3.1. N, as in Nancy, which stipulates the lot size, yards, and setback standards for this type of use. So within that, on the site plan that was submitted to us for review, the subject site is approximately 2.4 acres in size. Front yard setback requirement is 25 feet. The plan proposes 45. Side yard requirement is 20. The subject site proposes 25. Rear yard setback requirement is 20 feet. The plan and location of the facility will be greater than 250 feet from the rear property line, that would be the west property line. Building height is limited to 25 feet or two stories. And the proposed facility will be 20 feet. There is no maximum lot coverage requirement in the LM district. The site is approximately 19% covered. We also look at landscaping and screening. The site is significantly enhanced right now with existing vegetation. And as such, the applicant is seeking to utilize tree credits within that. So in our review, along the east property boundary, we found, thank you Casey, canopy trees, understory trees, shrubs, and green spaces for what's required. And that's based on linear frontage feet. So the size of the parcel requires two canopy trees, four understory, no shrubs, and a 10-foot green space. The applicant proposes two canopy, so it meets requirement. Three understory, where four is required, so partially. And then a greater than 10-foot green space. Again, with the intent to utilize existing tree credits for that understory. Further from there, we also look at parking lot landscaping. Requirement is 15 square feet per parking space at 19 spaces. Requirement is 285. Proposed is 300 square feet, so it does meet the ordinance requirement. Screening, we do have on here that because it is an existing densely wooded lot, that most of the western portion will be left. We did request from the... We did request from the applicant either a statement or acknowledgement that if anything from the western portion of the site is removed, that we may need to review landscaping provisions at a future date, should the site be expanded. That way, in case the applicant is no longer the owner of the property, we do have some provisions to help protect against the encroachment into the residential neighborhoods to the west. Off-street parking, again, the standards are there, 19 spaces required. They are proposing 19. Exterior lighting, there is a photometric plan that has been submitted. We find that to meet the intent of the ordinance. Additional review comments and considerations, we asked the applicant for clarity on trash disposal. As we're probably aware, a lot of commercial and industrial sites have probably large dumpsters. Giving our conversation with the applicant in the type of use, they find that it would be acceptable for the 96-gallon style or the more residential-type waste containers. So we found that acceptable, so long as if the use ever changed, we may need to again come back and review that at a future date. Signage can be handled administratively later. Fire has reviewed this and has provided a letter in here as well, and so has engineering. So overall, it looks to be a nice facility. They are meeting the standards of the ordinance, and we are confident in recommending that this be advanced for approval. And the applicant is here to speak further on this.
Mr. Watts, would you like to speak to this?
Just a little background on this project. The current owner of this building, after we were to build it, just moved into the 155 Elliott Street that you guys had as a rezone or something a few weeks ago. So the people are gonna wanna stay into Comstock Township. It's a 10,000-square-foot building for baseball training, and we're building it as a steel building to make sure it's a good resale tool and not just a little pole barn. So it's a good thing. The site right now is 220 feet wide by 467, and to keep a lot of green space from the adjacent neighbor to the west, we're only going back 155 out of the 467, which leaves us 312 feet to the back property line right now. And if you saw, I don't know if it's in your packet or not, I took pictures of the west line and the north line, how heavily vegetated that is, and those are trees that have been there for years. So even when we did the development, we didn't touch that line at all. So that's all gonna stay natural. This is gonna be part of the junior growlers, so the Kalamazoo Growlers have a current professional baseball team downtown in Kalamazoo. This is gonna be for junior growers from ages eight to 18 to train them and keep them out of trouble. And I think the, the site plan is very detailed, probably more than it needed to be, but it has everything that you guys need to approve this tonight, and we should be able to move forward. So, any questions?
Joseph?
The west side of the property right now appears to have a berm, a pile of dirt.
There's a, there's a pile in front of that, but that, but then if you get back to the back tree line.
Yeah.
Then there's, it goes back down.
Right. But, yeah. Is that berm gone?
The berm is staying right now. Yep.
All right, that's fine.
I don't wanna move it, nor do they wanna pay for it, so.
Well, it provides a wonderful barrier for, from the residential property.
Yep, and with that too, the adjacent neighbor to the west, who was a past planning commission member, she sent in a letter today to Casey saying that she's excited about it and that we talked, and if there were any issues, that I would address it with her. But we're not even gonna develop back there, so it's gonna stay way far away from her house. So, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Okay.
At this point, I'll open it to this, to our discussion. Amber, you got anything?
No, I don't. I wonder a little bit about how confident the, not, not Mr. Watts as a developer, but how confident the owner is about residential trash cans for a youth training facility, but that's a problem probably for another day. So beyond that, I don't have any questions.
Joseph?
No, my, my one question was concerning that berm and, and the buffer to the residential area. Others, it looks like an excellent project.
Oh?
No, I think it's great for the community, the young, young people, and gives them something to do and learn and train, and I have no problem with the site plan whatsoever.
James?
I have no problem with the site plan. Very excited, looking forward to see what happens here.
Sandy?
No, I'm good. No comment, thank you.
And I'm good. If we move ahead, we have to change, have to address our bylaws, right?
No, it's a site plan, so you don't have to.
Okay.
That's for public hearing.
So I guess I would look for a motion to approve the site plan?
I move that we approve the site plan presented for 256 Van Bergen.
Support. Let's do a roll call.
Okay, I can take that, one second. Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes 60A, 0As.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 6787 East H Avenue. Conditional rezoning request in public hearing. Kyle?
Mr. Chair, I know we're also a few minutes before 6:00, and I anticipate this being a lively discussion. Would you like to do a five-minute break?
Yeah, this would be a good time to take our break.
Yeah. I. 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 Yeah.
Okay. 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 Let's call this meeting to order again. And we'll start with the 6787 East H Avenue. Kyle, would you, or Casey?
Yeah, I will preface that after Kyle's staff report, the applicant has our presentation and then we can go on the public hearing afterwards.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, I'd like to clarify that this is not a standard rezoning that the commission looks at. This is a conditional rezoning. Conditional rezonings come forth when applicants want to provide limitations or stipulations on their rezoning requests themselves. So that's why in your packets here, it's more of a thorough or detailed letter than what we've seen in the past. The applicant, on their own initiative, has provided these conditions. Staff has not asked for these, has not engaged with them on this. This all came from the applicant themselves. So our comments are based on what they have provided to us as we get through this. So the first topic is on here, again, as Casey said, 6787 East H Avenue. They're requesting R1A, single-family, to go to RM, multifamily, again, with conditions. They have listed those within your packet and that starts on page one and two of our report. As our typical rezoning reviews go, we look at the subject site, what its future land use plan for. Currently, again, it's zoned R1A with the north, south, west, also R1A, and then the east, R1A because of the avenue there. And then further on from that, as agricultural residential. Future land use categories for a majority of these is compact residential, and I'll get into that here in a little bit. The first point we look at is whether the rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area and the township's land use plan. Again, our analysis was based on the adopted master plan, the Vision 2030, in which case the compact residential classification is defined as "this land use destination is intended to address the need for denser housing options that help to protect open space by utilizing higher densities while providing a mix of housing in a pattern that currently exists in the township. These areas are intended to be served with public water and sewer systems. Desired building types are single-family homes on a third-acre lots or smaller, and duplexes." We will note that the compact residential classification, again, in the master plan, calls for a unit density of three to eight dwelling units per acre. Redwood is proposing 6.5, so they fall below the threshold of the compact residential based on the township's adopted master plan. Whether all, on two, whether all the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. This, again, is different from our past ones we've looked at because they are imposing their own conditions on this, so it's not a one-for-one comparison as other rezonings we've looked at, but it is a limited permitted use. And I'll let Redwood speak to that further. Three, whether any public services and facilities would be significantly adversely impacted by development or use allowed under the requested rezoning. Because it is rezoning, we don't have the analysis of what a sewer or water usage might be on this, let alone traffic counts to that nature. So we're looking at this holistically here as a whole, not so much as a site-specific for terms of utilities. However, because the future land use map does classify this as compact residential, there is the implication that this would be serviced by existing or extended utilities. Four, whether the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited to the area than uses allowed under the current zoning of land. Again, this is going to be based on the applicant's conditional rezonings, so they are limiting themselves for what can be used. It would not be the full-on RM standards. It will be reduced to what they have indicated in their applications. From there, there's also standards for conditional rezonings, which we've outlined in our report. Talks about multifamily dwellings as well. Overall, we've provided general comments in our report for this. To you, nothing that stood out as concerning. From there, we also looked at the conditions as submitted by Redwood and provided general comments based on their limited permitted uses, building height limitation. We also have density limitation, building length limitation from the applicant, floor area per unit minimum, ownership of the property, private access aisles. The conditional rezoning application is, again, conditioned on them purchasing property, and so forth. From that, I will defer to the applicant to speak more on it. However, we have listed some general findings in here, and if the chair would like, I'm happy to address them at this time before they present, or we can allow the applicant to present further on their.
Let's go ahead and present, or go ahead with that.
Good evening. My name is Emily Engelhardt. I'm with Redwood. Thank you for having me here and thank you all for being here this evening. I will try to keep my presentation short, as I know there's a lot of folks in this room and everyone wants to speak. But I do want to speak to Redwood because we do feel that we are a unique entity in the apartment development space, and I'd love to speak a little bit about it. Just about us, Redwood is a company founded in 1991 by our founder to reinvent the idea of what an apartment can be and who might want to live in one, to provide an apartment that looks, lives, and feels a lot like a single-family home, but is a for-rent, providing flexibility, providing a different type of housing for communities and for residents of those communities. We have now reached over 20,000 apartment developments, apartments that we've developed, and we still own and manage the, all of the units that we've ever built. So we are, I think, now the nation's largest build-to-rent developer-owner. And I've listed our core values of what, you know, our company is about and what we intend to do. And I've been with Redwood since, working with them in some capacity since 2011, so I've been with them a long time and was involved in the first Comstock Township project. So who are we? We are a low-density apartment developer that offers main-floor living. As I mentioned, we have over 20,000 units. We offer onsite professional management, and we do the entitlement, build, own, and manage our neighborhoods. We intend to stay in the community and remain a part of the community. Who are our residents? We are not age-restricted. We will rent to anyone who qualifies. However, we found that due to the nature of our design, we've often been appealing to empty-nesters, seniors, young professionals, people who are renters by choice often, who are looking for a different type of housing, some kind of flexibility, you know, wanting to not own a condo or own a home for whatever reason. We require a background check, a credit check, and we have a neighborhood, actually a two-phase neighborhood already in Comstock Township that we're very proud of and we're very happy with. It's fully leased with phase one and we're under construction for phase two. We have six of those units that are already pre-leased, even though we don't have certificates of occupancy yet, so we find a demand here for this housing, and so that's why I'm back here today. We also have neighborhoods in Portage, Texas Township, and throughout the state. This is just a little bit more about our residents. I'll let you continue. These are just some interesting statistics about our overall portfolio. This looks at 19,880 units, but the average age of a resident is 52 years. We have less than two residents per apartment home, less than two cars per apartment home. You know, our average lease is longer than what you might find in the commercial apartment space, 15 months resident, or average lease term. Average resident stay, three years. And we find that more than half of our leases are renewed, and 21% of our residents stay more than five years. These are just some, this is just some information about what, how we create these neighborhoods and try to keep them a safe, peaceful, quiet place for folks to live through some of our controls of background checks, credit checks, onsite management, things like that. This is just some discussion of, you know, looking at renting a home versus buying a home. We're a for-rent product, but we are a market rate development. But, you know, with the current housing market, the interest rates, a lot of people are seeking rentals or seeking flexibility or finding renting to be more affordable, so we've put those costs together. This is just a little bit about where we are across the broader Midwest. I would say we're growing with the goal to, you know, be in every major city of the continental United States at some point, but right now, we're in 10 active markets, I believe, and have 34 neighborhoods across Michigan. I've been involved in almost all of the ones in Michigan, and I'm very proud of all those apartment-home communities. These are some things that I look at to make sure that we can be successful and that we are looking at the right types of communities that will be able to support our Redwood developments. We want to make sure that, you know, we're building in the right spot, so looking at employment, looking at age of homes nearby, housing condo data, looking at our other developments to make sure that we're not overbuilding in an area, retail, things like that. So what do we build? We primarily have done two-bedroom, two-bathroom, attached-to-car garage for almost our entire portfolio. Recently, we have seen a demand from our residents for a little bit of variety, for whatever reason. Like I mentioned, there's less than two people on average renting, living in an apartment, so we started to offer some one-bedroom, one-bathroom units to come in at a different price point, provide a different option for folks. And then we have a limited amount of three-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, three-bath apartment homes that are new options for folks. We still are keeping the concept of two bedrooms, two bathrooms, but we are trying to broaden to meet people's demand, whether it's bringing, you know, an elderly parent in to live with you, or, you know, someone returning from college, or something like that, or a family, just trying to have better options. Each of our units have a private attached garage. Main-floor living, like I stated, currently, our units are single-story. However, we are, again, trying to move and develop with the times, and we are testing out some townhouse units, which would not have folks living above each other, but would have two stories in a limited capacity. Those would still retain the primary bedroom on the first floor, but just different options for, for folks. So that's something that we are just piloting and starting to offer. We, you know, try to keep our sites beautiful with landscaping, siding, vaulted ceilings, really making these feel and look and live like homes. But we do provide high service, low maintenance. We try to, you know, if somebody has a problem with a light bulb, we'll come in and help with that, taking out the trash, handling all the exterior maintenance. These are just some pictures of our neighborhoods, some renderings, and some photos of different types of units. We call them neighborhoods because they live a lot like a neighborhood. As you're driving through, you'll see different types of units, different colors of units, while they are attached, townhome-style apartments. You know, each unit can live and look a little bit differently in terms of floor plan and exteriors. These are Willowood units, are a little wider and less deep. This is a Dogwood unit, which is a one-bedroom design. These are also the new one- and three-bedroom designs that will be paired together. Some different street views, just how our neighborhoods look. I think the best way to see is to look at the one on G Avenue and Gold Road. Just in terms of some of our maintenance, we're long-term holders. We, you know, charge a healthy rent, and we need to make sure that we can continue to charge that rent and that people want to live there. So we take a lot of pride in keeping our neighborhoods well-kept and mowed and landscaped and the snow removed, so just some information. I think I'm almost there. Just some different things. We offer a lot of features that folks would look for in a home, eat-in kitchens, washer-dryer hookups, vaulted ceiling, ceiling fans, things like that, so just some more pictures. And that garage, storage, a lot of focus on storage. I like this slide. This is one of the first ones that we built in 2006. We still own it. You know, we continually get awards for it. We're still renting these units for an average of $1,900 a month, and it's 90, almost 98% occupied, this neighborhood. So we still take as much pride in our first neighborhoods as we do in our more current, modern neighborhoods. I think Kyle and Casey did a wonderful job going through a lot of this, but I did just put our site location, the land use maps, as to why we arrived at the site. And then discussion about the idea of a conditional rezoning. We offer a conditional rezoning because we want to provide some certainty as to what we plan to do here. We're not coming in to build three, four-story, multi-garden-style apartments. We want to build a Redwood neighborhood, and we tried to create conditions that would provide certainty that that's what we intend to do with this site. And the conditions are listed on the next page at this point, but, you know, kind of creating a density limitation, the idea that most of the buildings, if not all, will be single-story. We are going to own these as single owners. We're not going to flip them into condos. And then, most of all, the contingency that this rezoning would be contingent on us purchasing the property, so it will not go into effect if we walked away. I think this is just a summary. We are excited to be here, excited to hear the feedback, and I will yield to everyone else. Thank you so much for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Kyle, would you like to take it from here?
Well, I think it would be beneficial if the commission has any questions. There may be questions from the audience, too, that, as you ask yours, may address some of the comments from the presidents, and then from there, you could go to your public hearing, or you could do your public hearing first and then comments and discussion.
Okay. Joseph?
Public hearing? I don't have any comments.
I have no comments at all.
Oh. Okay. I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. What I stated earlier still is what we expect in public hearing.
I can emphasize the three-minute.
Yeah, three-minute time.
Hi, I'm Jamie Nichols. I live at 3499 North 28th Street. Earlier today, I emailed Casey, and then she forwarded to each of you a summary outlining six main reasons why rezoning the built property, the Brill property, would be inconsistent with the township's current master plan. And the categories I addressed were environmental impacts, potential economic liabilities for nearby homeowners, increased traffic, light, and noise, a loss of green space, a negative community response, and incompatible aesthetics. The land use question before us isn't arbitrary. It specifically cuts against the goals for serving community interests, safety, and character. In other words, the proposed rezoning doesn't enhance the township's overall master plan, it undermines it. The present rezoning regulations have sufficiently guided prior decisions for our 28th Street neighborhood, and most recently, it informs safety concerns for the driveway placement for the new house built across from the Brill property. If the hilly street with its blind spots and hidden driveways raised concern for the traffic pertaining to just one dwelling, what about the traffic safety risks associated with 130 times that number of dwellings? Or consider the previous rejection of a duplex proposal just a couple blocks north. It was rejected because it would be out of place to build a multifamily unit among single-family homes. So then, what was inconsistent for just one structure certainly cannot be appropriate for dozens of tightly-packed duplexes or quadplexes. We all know that good planning isn't about changing direction simply because an opportunity is proposed. It's about staying on course so long as the existing plan continues to serve local interests. The zoning status of the Brill property doesn't need amending, it needs defending. Our township's current zoning plan for this corridor is solid. It has served us well all these years because it was thoughtfully designed and consistently implemented. Anyone asking to change it needs to explain how the surrounding community will be better for it, and so far, that case hasn't been made. So please, we urge you to make a decision that emphasizes, emphasizes the interests of all these local neighbors, not those of a national property development corporation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm sorry I lost my voice. My name is Jessica Vedder. I live at 6869 East H Avenue. If you look at the picture that Redwood so nicely showed, I am the 10 acres that is directly surrounded by the 20 and 1/2 acres that they would like to purchase and turn into multifamily homes. This directly affects me and my family. I have two small children, I have three dogs, and I like to use my property. So do the rest of the neighbors. So do the foxes and the ground squirrels, the deer, the coyotes, whatever built a den in my back. I don't go in there. I've tried to put RC car to sea, but I'm leaving it alone. Lots of people like to use that property. It's not their property. We understand that. Single-family homes would be welcoming. It would absolutely use that property in a wonderful way. Multifamily homes would be an absolute decimation of our neighborhood. I have personally walked through the neighborhood over these past few weeks and garnered 197 signatures on an online petition saying that we do not want this. All of the neighbors are worried about where are these streets going to go? Certainly not on East H Avenue, because when I pull out of my own driveway, there's hills and I have enough problems seeing, so I know it would not pass there. That... That leaves 28th Street, which Jamie has already spoken about, and the Reynolds neighborhood, which is full of families. There was a 10-year-old boy that was just hit by a car and killed today, and that would be my biggest nightmare for our neighborhood because of so many extra cars coming through. I believe from the statistic that I tried to pull, it would add somewhere around 1,200 extra vehicles per day, not counting Amazon and utility vehicles. That is not a neighborhood that can withstand that kind of traffic. I live on East H Avenue. That's where my driveway comes out of, it's 45 miles an hour. I understand where I'm placed, I can come out. Nobody else coming out from those neighborhoods could withstand that with 1,200 extra cars per day. I don't even want to know what that would look like. I had a whole thing written, and Jamie covered most of it. Altogether, in canvassing this neighborhood, not one single person told me they wanted this. When somebody that has a no soliciting sign on their door and opens it like the Wizard of Oz, gives me a hug at the end of our conversation, welcomes me into his home, I know that I'm on the right side of this. I've worked very, very hard to make sure that all the neighbors know what's going on, because nobody would be in this room if I hadn't said anything. I'm really, really proud of our neighborhood and how we all want to protect the integrity, and I really hope that you all listen to us and actually do what we're asking you to. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Johnson, and I've been a proud resident of Comstock Township for 29 years. In all of that time, I've never felt the need to get involved in local government until now, and until the recent battery energy storage system proposal, and apparently now the housing option. For nearly three decades, I've trusted our township leadership to protect what makes Comstock special, but lately, it feels like we're drifting from that shared vision, trying to reshape our small-town community into something that it was never meant to be. We're not the city of Kalamazoo. We do not need to be squeezed into dense concrete neighborhoods or surrounded by sprawling developments. We live here because we like our trees, our open land, and our green spaces, the very things the Vision 2030 Master Plan promised to preserve. That plan calls for growth that's sustainable, compatible, and respectful of our community's character. Large multifamily rental complexes do not fit that description. Now, let's consider the impact on our schools. Comstock Public Schools currently serve about 1,880 students with an average 16 to 1 student-teacher ratio. A proposed 120-unit rental development could bring between 24 and 96 additional students, depending on occupancy. Even at the low end, that's one or two new classrooms. At the high end, that's nearly a full grade of students, arriving all at once without new classrooms, teachers, buses to accommodate. And let's not forget that our community just voted down a $31.8 million school millage that would have expanded the elementary schools and made much-needed facility improvements. That vote sent a clear message: Our residents cannot absorb additional tax burdens. If our schools don't have the funding to expand, how can we justify approving a high-density housing that will immediately increase enrollment pressure? Our teachers already do already incredible work with limited resources. Many of our students rely on free and reduced-price lunches, and a sudden population increase will stretch staff, services, and space even thinner. When rental turnover is high, children move in and move out mid-year, disrupting classrooms and creating instability for everyone involved. And we have to be realistic. These new apartments are not affordable for most local young families. With the advertised rents between $1,900 and $3,000 a month, that doesn't align with our $77,000 township typical and typical rent of nearly $1,000. So, while marketed as new housing, they don't meet our community's affordability or family housing needs. After 29 years, I have seen what makes Comstock unique: neighbors who know each other, kids who can play under mature trees, and a township that balances growth with green space. That's the balance we're going to lose if we continue approving large, high-density rezonings. I respectfully urge you to deny the rezoning request, and let's make choices that reflect the will of the Comstock residents and protect the small-town character and quality of life that define this community.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ryan Vickel. I live at 3530 Buckskin Road, directly west of the property, under consideration for rezoning. I am here tonight respectfully but firmly oppose the conditional rezoning request submitted by Redwood USA LLC to rezone 6787 East H Avenue and 3615 North 28th Street from R1A single home to RM multiple-family residential. While I understand the township's desire for respectful, responsible growth and additional housing, this proposal represents a major departure from the existing neighborhood's character and intent. The R1A district was designed to preserve low-density, single-family areas that foster a quiet, family-oriented environment, the qualities that make our community desirable and stable. This rezoning would more than double the housing density, from the approximately two to three homes per acre to over six units per acre. Such a dramatic increase will inevitably raise traffic volumes, noise levels, public safety risks along East H Avenue and North 28th Street. Yet, the developer's application includes no traffic impact study, no stormwater or infrastructure review, and no assurance that existing water, sewer, drainage systems can handle the additional load. Without these assessments, approving this rezoning would be premature and could shift maintenance and infrastructure costs to township taxpayers. Importantly, this request is not consistent with the goals in Comstock Township Master Plan, which emphasizes compatible, sustainable growth that complements existing neighborhoods. This plan developed development that maintains the integrity established residential areas and transitions density gradually, not abruptly through spot rezonings. Moreover, the developer's proposal offers no measurable public benefit, no housing options, no green or park space, and no local infrastructure improvements, only private profit for out-of-town company. For this reasons, I urge the Planning Commission to deny this request.
Thank you.
Yep.
John Dickman, Township President. I actually live around, well, two corners from that. Anyways, the 10-acre parcel that fronts 28th Street, I looked at that in the early 2000s when we were contemplating a move back to Comstock Township, and I passed on it for reasons. And then, as I find out shortly thereafter, I dodged a bullet. When we passed on the property, a guy that my wife worked with at the time looked at it. He was motivated to build a new house. He went out and walked the property. I never did. And he said there was cinder blocks and timbers and all kinds of stuff sticking up out of the ground. He's got a buddy that's an environmental engineer. The engineer went out and looked at it and said, "Yeah, that was a city dump that they used up until the mid-1950s." And said, "I can guarantee you, there's asbestos in that, plus God knows what else." So, irregardless of what happens tonight with the rezoning, or the development, or anything like that, I think it would be prudent for not only for the township to investigate that a little further, perhaps do some remediation to protect the residents from what could be in there. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Hines. I live at 3698 North 28th Street, directly across the street from said property. I've been a proud resident of Comstock for 11 months. Thank you. And my husband and I and my family moved here from a city, living in a neighborhood. And nothing against neighborhoods, I love neighborhoods. I grew up in all the neighborhoods, but we wanted land, we wanted fresh air, we wanted space, we wanted to see the stars at night, and that's what we got. And now, we are living across the street from this land that potentially will have a driveway directly across from our driveway for a dense, multifamily property, which it was called. So, we moved here because we love, we love the woods, we love the fields, we love the open sky, we love to see the stars at night because there's not light pollution. We love Comstock Township because of its charm and the way that it's, you know, we have this open field next to us and all of these things. And so, this property across the street from us, it provides a continuation of the nature that we have on our property. It gives the area a sense of space and calm and nature, and if it is filled with these dense rental properties and parking lots, that feeling is gone. And so, while all of these fabulous residents behind or before me have given you many statistics and all of these awesome things, my things I'm sharing with you are very selfish, but I think that's okay. The nature gives, cools the air, it helps with drainage, it gives wildlife a home, and it is very simple to build properties, right? It's very simple to build these rental properties, but it is very difficult to rebuild nature. And so, if we take this down and we destroy it, it is going to be so much harder to rebuild something like that. So, please don't deprive our current residents of nature that's already there, that's been there for so long. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Hines. I live at 3698 North 28th Street. As my wife said, we moved in about 11 months ago for those very same reasons that she just outlined. We also have two, soon to be three, high-school-aged children, driving-age children, who drive on 28th Street every day, as we have moved them into having their own car and getting jobs and driving to the various places that they have to go. Every day, we leave, and for the most part, we know that they're going to be okay. It's a fairly safe road. Adding approximately 1,200 vehicles that could be driving down that road every single day presents a safety risk that is very concerning. As my wife said, it's a very, it's a quiet place, it's calm, it's peaceful. Adding in potentially 1,200 cars, not including Amazon and utilities, is not best, it's not what's best for this area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Hamilton. I live at 3580 North 28th Street. I moved next door to the Hines', after they bought and I built. One week ago tonight, Kalamazoo's Planning Commission met to take comments from local folks concerned citizens. At stake was a rezoning request from an out-of-state developer to change zoning at Stadium Drive and Drake Road from residential to commercial use. Citizens were overwhelmingly opposed to the rezoning. They spoke for five hours, can you imagine, in three-minute segments. After consideration, the commission voted unanimously to reject the rezoning proposal. Citizens expressed their objections, and they were heard. Comstock is a small suburb of Kalamazoo. I do not expect that Comstock citizens will speak for five hours tonight. I do expect, however, that these citizens, with similar passion for the future of this undeveloped land, will and are speaking out. I am not opposed to Josie Brill selling her land, I am opposed to rezoning it for the purposes stated above. North 28th Street in Comstock Township is a county road with a posted 55 mile-an-hour speed limit. It is a one-mile stretch between G and H avenues, a straightaway which seems to attract loud, high-speed vehicles. I moved here in 1980 and have lived in this country road for 45 years. I'm considered an old-timer here. I recall in 81 when my two-year-old niece rode her Hot Wheels tricycle down the middle of 28th Street to visit the cow in the barn on the corner of H Avenue and 28th. My sister, her toddler, and I walked safely down the middle. Traffic was low and slow. Over the years, traffic speed and noise have steadily increased. If the request for a zoning change is approved by this Planning Commission and Township Board, 28th and H could see an increase in vehicle use of up to 15 daily trips from proposed multifamily rentals. One new access point from Redwood on the 28th Street corridor could open the road to hundreds of additional vehicles a day. If rezoned, I foresee a traffic light at G Avenue and 28th Street, compromising 28th Street as an edge of the country, living, and adding even more traffic to the new roundabout at the already-existing Redwood apartment complex. There is no shoulder on this 55 mile-an-hour stretch of 28th Street. I ride my bicycle on it, I walk my dog on it, I cross the street to get my mail, I cross the street to talk to my neighbors. When I put in my new mailbox eight months ago, it's been hit three times already, and I had to replace it. So, somebody's suspicious. I'm 76 years old. I'm concerned for my physical safety if the rezoning is approved. I urge this Planning Commission, some of whom are our neighbors, all of whom live in Comstock, to reject Redwood USA's rezoning request for multifamily rental units and to maintain the single-family status of Josie Brill's very sellable 22 acres of land. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Tammy Keeler. Concerning the one that they put up there on G Avenue and Gull Road, it's right on the roundabout. You think that's a safe place? I mean, it's not safe. You can't even get in there. People are going to be getting hit there and everything else. I don't know if you guys have seen it, right past Speedway. It's right there on the roundabout. I couldn't believe it when I seen it. And this, taking away this nature and stuff, you guys are just doing this all wrong. What future do our kids have? Like I said, this ain't a big city. This is not New York. And for crying out loud, built-in low-income housing. Nobody can take these homes for $1,900 to $3,000 a month anyway. You guys are not thinking about the seniors and the low-income people. We are a middle-class Comstock. We've always been middle-class, not the high-class. And you think that having this battery plant there is going to bring in the high-class people? No, nobody in their bright mind is going to move into Comstock. I hate to say that. But we need more senior housing, more housing for low-income people. And you guys are not thinking about that. You just think about lining your pockets with those tax dollars, and that's all that you want, and that is the truth. You are not looking out for our seniors, and you are not looking out for our low-income. You're not looking out for these families that need help now. This is why most of them are moving out of Comstock now. Their rent's so high here, it's not even funny. But like I said, if your tax dollars go up, oh, boy, you're going to be all happy on that. But you guys have to know, this is a middle-class town and has always been. My dad raised nine of us kids up on a hill on JK. They raised nine of us. He worked for construction. He used to have to go out of town to make enough money, you know, to support us. But for crying out loud, put something in there for seniors, not this high-class stuff. You don't need it, they don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Nichols. I live at 3499 North 28th Street, and I appreciate you hearing our thoughts tonight. One of the things that has always distinguished Comstock Township is the thoughtful balance: commercial where it belongs, homes where they fit, open land where the eye can rest. This proposal threatens that balance. Traveling east from Gull Road, there's visible transitions between, transition, business gives way to neighborhoods that open up to countryside that flows in no accident, this was planned. Paving over one of the- Paving over one of this last green parcels in the sequence undoes years of foresight. Green space isn't always wasted space. It's the breathing room that keeps our township livable. And to add on to that, it's, it's not that we didn't expect that a neighborhood would go in. When we moved here, we fully expected that the potential that they would build homes um, next to us and, and that is not a problem for us. It's, it's the amount and the density. Um, it doesn't fit the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin Inman. I live at, uh, on the corner of Crestwood and Reynolds, a little bit north of the property. Um, I prepared a bunch of statements, but it's gonna be repetitive, so I'm gonna throw that out and wing it. Um, so I'm just gonna focus on the traffic. So, when I moved in 25 years ago, there was nothing to the north of me and we watched that develop into single family homes. And we were attracted to the neighborhood because we walked it and our neighborhood is the walking neighborhood and including at least one board member walks our neighborhood on a daily basis. On, on any given day, we probably get 50 people walking. You get, you know, families, uh, mothers with strollers, babies, families with little kids, um, couples, you get runners and bicyclists. We're the exercise walking neighborhood. If this rezoning was approved and they made a connection to Reynolds, you're looking at all that traffic making their shortcut to Myers, Chick-fil-A, all the businesses and they come around my corner. And it would increase the traffic so much, it would be a safety issue for all the people that like to walk. Um, and I think that it just is a bad idea. It like, it'd be repetitive, what I would say on all the other reasons. So, that's really the only point that I wanna make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dina O'Connor and I reside at 317 Longdale Avenue. Thank you so much. I wanna say thank you for your time to listen to all of my neighbors. I'm so proud of Comstock Township. I'm so proud of neighbors. People have, people that have never gotten up to speak have spoke. People that have only lived here 11 months have gotten up to speak and I'm just proud of my community. I am winging it. Normally I have something to read. I've already prepared, but I'm winging it because I've been dealing with the police in my neighborhood concerning, uh, a current meth lab ring or whatever you wanna call it. And, um, the police were on my property about a week or so ago and we were having a discussion and he was apologizing to me for the, um, lack of response and for the length of response time because remember guys, we only have one dedicated Kalamazoo County Sheriff in our township. And I just don't know, has anybody talked to the police department to see how they feel about adding all these multiple homes and everything else? We, the township can't afford, um, another police officer. We've asked for it. We can't afford it. What are we gonna do? Public safety first, safety first, last and always. Thank you again so much for listening to everybody and thank you everybody for standing up and speaking for your neighbors and your families and the community.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Buck and I do live on Buckskin Road. I have been a resident of Com- of Comstock Township for 46 years. My husband is even longer, um, but I'm a transplant from the east side. I appreciate Emily's comments about the median and the average and the, of the population that lives in her apartments across the state and across the nation. However, I was doing some research today on Redwood and I found on UniversityLiving.com these quotes. Because of its great location, amenities, safety and security, this outstanding student housing in Kalamazoo is regarded as one of the best student housing options in the city. I didn't hear anything about students living in Redwood or Redwood Comstock, but that location that is currently under, under, um, construction is being touted as one of the most outstanding student housing projects in the area. Further, here's a quote right from the website. Here at this Redwood Comstock Township accommodation, students will get housing options like two bed and two bath apartments that are ideal for a group of two friends or those who love socializing. Right from the website. My concern is that this new development may be promoted in the same way. In the Comstock 2030 master plan I reviewed, I heard the needs of seniors, the needs of families, the needs of singles, nothing about the needs of student housing. Having just heard about the thin protection we have from our, our Sheriff's Department, I wager that this is not a road we wanna go down, but yet here it is on a website. I wanna thank Jamie Nichols for being first to set the tone. I agree with everything that he has said and I encourage the Township Planning Commission to vote no. It's not against the sale of the property. Josie Brill has every right to develop or sell to developers. That's not the issue. The issue is moving from single family to multiple family and that's what we object to. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's nice to see some familiar faces. I think you all have probably seen my face walking through the neighborhood. So, my name's Jenna Vickel. I live at 3530 Buckskin Avenue. Um, thank you to, um, Jessica and to, um, Jamie who has been a big help. Um, I went around the neighborhood as long as with them to sign a petition for neighbors to decline the Redwood. Um, all in all, I got 107, um, paper signatures and that's 73 homes. So, that's pretty much the whole 20 acres surrounding our property. Um, our biggest concerns are with the traffic. Um, my husband and I have two five year old twin boys who love to ride and down Buckskin. I swear there's no speed limit sign and everybody just flies through. I don't know how many times I've yelled at people to slow down, um, because there's kids at play all in the neighborhood. We have a lot of people who walk dogs, strollers with babies, um, and they're all at risk for the, um, increase in traffic. Another one is the drainage and infrastructure. Um, if it can hold all that, the area would already experiences drainage and stormwater issues. Um, and then the town's master plan, um, designates this area for low density residential use, rezoning to, um, conflicts with that vision and the surrounding single family zoning pattern. When we first bought our house on Buckskin, um, actually my husband's grandpa owned it. I wasn't really sure I wanted to live there. I remember telling my husband, I don't, I don't really know. I don't know. But we went and looked at it and I fell in love with our view. Our view is the backyard is all, you know, the acreage back there, we see deer, we see foxes. Um, my boys will run out and say, Mom, there's a deer out there. And I'll say, well, you gotta be really quiet so you don't scare it. Um, because they have scared it. They've pounded on the window and the deer have ran. I mean, they've literally been in our backyard. Um, we know that Josie has every right to sell it and we are not opposed to that. We would much rather see families in there. Um, renters can come and go as they please. We, single families have put a lot of time, effort into this community and we hope to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I originally wasn't even gonna speak on this one. I don't have much of a vested interest. I, I really came for the best thing and I encourage everyone here in this room to stay for the best, uh, discussion because in a six mile wide township, it, it affects you. I neighbor it, but it affects you. So, I just came up here to kinda give you my thoughts, um, as a fairly new resident to township. I moved in in 23. I don't see any 20 somethings on that side of the table and I'd like to just kinda share my financial experience, um, going in from a renting unit to a home buying unit, which I, I did in Comstock, right? Um, the, um, the idea, or I should say the, the rent, the rents that were listed, the 1,900 to 3,000, I kinda have to chuckle at that number, you know, thinking that there's any advantage to making that multifamily homes over its current zoning. If you look at the average sale price of a home in the US, it's 400K right now. If you look at the average monthly cost on a 30 year mortgage with two to 5% down, um, you're looking at about $2,400 monthly cost on that mortgage. And the average age of home buyers is closer to 50. 50 year olds, the, why they, why would they choose Comstock not for a multifamily home? You know, and so it's just what, what, what would really sell, right? Um, you know, these are, these were, I saw this happen. I came from the east side. I came from Metro Detroit, right? And so I, I saw, I saw the, um, everyone began building on top of each other. It happened at the town I was from. It is what it is. People do live that way. But I'll tell you something else that might kind of gone underneath the data is that the GDP of Kalamazoo is not competitive to the GDP of Detroit. And when you look at people living in, you know, um, uh, high residential areas, it's because they need to get to an office. People moved to areas like Comstock and Kalamazoo and areas that were more wooded because COVID let almost every white collar employee go work remote. For the last year, that's been disappearing and people are not going to have the luxury to live in areas for the green space, for the things of that nature. So, you need to start thinking about, you know, how do you really, you know, showcase Comstock as a place to live? Because cramming a bunch of people in an underserved from police force community, uh, a school that isn't ready to accept that number, um, you're, you're gonna try to make a Metro Detroit style investment around a industry hub that just doesn't have the GDP to support it. And I don't think people are gonna pick Comstock, uh, because we're so far away from 131 to commute to their jobs in Grand Rapids without looking at a lot of other options. So, just a thought, your target market is most likely 50 year old house buyers. That's the biggest group. They're not looking for multifamily homes in that area. I don't really see how the rezoning is beneficial for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's not attached. Good evening. I'm Janine Dosa. Um, 31 years ago, my husband and I had a home that I designed, built, uh, at the very, um, beginning of the neighborhood at the end of Crestwood. When we built, we were the first row of houses on the west side of Star Chief. Everything that is to the east of Star Chief has come up under our view of the construction. And over the 31 years, we've seen the traffic go exponentially up and we've seen crime come into our little quiet neighborhood that started out with four houses being built together. And that's what happens when you add more and more people. So, I felt the need to speak up, even though we're some distance, the furthest in the new part of the plat- from what's being proposed. But, um, what is striking me tonight is that when we built and all the homes that we've watched go up in front of us, it was with the understanding that this whole block, including this property that is being discussed, was zoned single family. And we had no expectation that there would be a high density multifamily, um, section being added. And I think it's unfair to all the people that live especially adjacent or people that built or bought less than a year ago with that understanding that they were across from more single family. Um, it's unfair for that to get changed out from under people who have no choice if it is approved that this could happen. So, I would, uh, ask that you deny this request and allow this, uh, part of the community to say, stay single family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Edinger. I live at 3419 North 28th Street. We've been there about eight years. Uh, I'm just, I, I just gotta reiterate the same thing you guys have already heard. I know one of my big concerns with having two little kids is the traffic and the speed of the traffic. Living just north of where the H Avenue, 28th Street intersection is, I can tell you, people come through there way too fast all the time. I'm already terrified having my five and seven year old by the road anywhere near it. Uh, I heard a gentleman mention that it was the walking neighborhood just north of this property. I absolutely attest to that. My kids love going up there. We go for walks and bike rides in that neighborhood all the time. If we're gonna add hundreds, maybe thousands of cars coming up and down 28th Street every day, I, it, there's no shoulder already. It's terrifying. Many times we end up driving up there, even though it's only, Jamie's the only house between me and that neighborhood, we still drive up there because we're too nervous already about the amount of traffic and the speed the cars are going. The other thing with the traffic that concerns me, I haven't heard mentioned yet, is there's a lot of people that live around that intersection there of H and 28th. No, every year when it snows or gets nasty out, H Avenue gets shut down because there's some sort of an accident down there. Somebody sliding off. Now we're adding hundreds, thousands of cars that could potentially be going down there. We're just gonna have more accidents, more issues. It's the, the infrastructure, the roads, they're just not built for this kind of traffic. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Justin Rowland and I am a Comstock Township resident, along with my wife and my nine year old daughter. Uh, kinda new to the game. We've only been in Comstock Township for five years and kinda new to the game about learning about this initiative and I'm, I wanna be thankful to my neighbors that have brought this to our attention. I don't know if this is normal. I've been told it's not, right? I've, I've been told that the turnout here is, is not typical and I think that speaks for itself. Um, when we moved to Con- Comstock Township, we did it because of the qualities it had to offer us, right? The neighborhood was fantastic. The kids and the families were fantastic. Access to the things that we need, quick, easy, fantastic, along with the country feel, the rural part of it. I love being able to go down 28th Street and teach my daughter about the wildlife that we see. So, I hope that this board listens to your community and follows suit from the examples that we heard earlier. Because I don't, I don't think you can deny that your community is against this and they don't want it. I don't want it. My wife doesn't want it. So, please follow suit, do what you can to support your community and not an outside venture capitalist corporation. Keep us what we are. I've also been asked to, um, hand you this, uh, neighborhood opposition letter to put on the record. Is that allowed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Tollhurst. Uh, I did not come here to prepare to speak on this topic either, but, uh, this crowd that, uh, has been speaking to you already has moved me to say that I also oppose this rezoning request, uh, for the Redwood development. Uh, I previously, just, uh, last year, lived, uh, in the Meadowwood neighborhoods over there where this development would be. And I too can attest that it is a very lovely neighborhood to walk through and I still walk through that neighborhood because I live just only a few roads down, um, or by, uh, by the road that runs next to Meyer there, what, 26th Street or whatever. Um, you know, so, uh, I would agree with everybody else too that, uh, there is a great concern for traffic, uh, for that hill on H Avenue there, uh, for the traffic on 28th Street where there is no shoulder. I've driven both of those roads many times, uh, throughout my years of living here in Comstock. So, I ask that the board, uh, reject this rezoning request and reconsider.
Thank you.
I would just like, I would just like to say thank you for listening. Um, and also, it, it's a personal treat for me to be able to see so many neighbors in the area. That's really nice. It's really, it's really nice. My name is Beverly Nichols. I live in, with my, um, son and daughter in law at 3499 North 28th Street. I want to highlight traffic impacts. Uh, it was very distressing to hear of a child being killed today. Multi-family developments generate roughly 10 daily trips per unit. At 130 units, that's about 1,300 to 1,500 trips a day, including deliveries and services. Now imagine funneling all of that through 28th Street where sightlines are limited and hills obscure oncoming traffic. I know at our own house, um, I stop and count to about 15 before I pull out of the driveway because there's a space that you can't see the top of the cars. Add headlights at night, backup beepers and garbage collection at dawn. There isn't a made, a minor change. It's a transformation of a safe, low volume road. I urge you to require a full traffic impact assessment before approving any rezoning. Once it's rezoned, the precedent is set and there's no going back. And I- And I just, um, say God bless the family who lost their child today.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Bornhorst. I live at 9015 East H Avenue. Uh, I have four boys. Uh, my wife and I have eight acres. Uh, we love the countryside, so I got a couple of things to say. The nicest parts of Comstock Township, I think, are in the countryside. Uh, if we want further blight on the township, we're going to continue down this path of high density housing. Emily Pets from the Upton Institute, uh, in her presentation, she talks about, uh, housing development, um, and it showed 68% of people want to see more duplexes, townhomes, cottage courts and apartments. Where are those people? Like who, uh, all I see in that type of housing is people paying rent or condo association fees and paying rent to somebody else unfortunately stunts the biggest wealth building tool, uh, in owning a home. Uh, and it takes the money out of the township and it puts it into the hands of large corporations that are based elsewhere. Uh, if, if you think about it, the equity that you build in owning a home, in the appreciation of the, of the value, you paying a mortgage payment and putting the money into that home keeps the money in the area, right? And it builds value. Um, it increases the taxes, uh, which is obviously what you guys care about. Comstock will continue down the path of underperforming schools, homelessness, homelessness and substance abuse. The real question is how do we incentivize companies, uh, where we can bring in stable, higher paying jobs and we can actually create neighborhoods rather than always trying to fill the gap with, uh, lower income housing, which this isn't. Uh, $2,000 to $3,000, you can buy a $340,000 house in Comstock for $2,300 a month. That's your full payment. And that's, we're going to be, these houses or these apartments are going to be rentals for that same amount. And it just, it's sad. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Webster. I live at 3758 Reynolds Avenue. I have lived in Comstock for 15 years. Um, I even used to live over on Prairie Hill, just a couple of streets over. So I'm very much invested in the neighborhood. Um, we already deal with a lot of traffic on Reynolds, um, where I live, right up at, I think we're kind of on the hill, the road kind of curves, people fly through all the time. Um, people do cut through. I know people that live in H Avenue will cut through our neighborhood. Um, this is just going to add more to that, whether, um, the neighborhood connects to Buckskin or not, we're going to have an increase of traffic. Um, I already deal with, uh, foot traffic that goes behind our house because we're right there at the power lines, um, which is going to run right along this, uh, this new community. And so we're going to deal with a lot more foot traffic behind our house as well as, you know, car traffic in the front. Um, I have no objection to, um, keeping the zoning the way it is for single family homes. People can come buy homes, be part of the community, help build the community, uh, have a sense of pride in where they live and being part of Comstock. Um, you know, that's, you don't get that same type of thing when you have, um, you know, people that are a bit more transient, you know? They don't have a stake in Comstock. They're just here until they're not. But I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Janie Kissinger, 322 Lawndale. I want to welcome all of you that haven't been here for that long. I've been here for 68 years. Um, please, please listen to these people. We are not Kalamazoo. We are not Portage. Do we want to be them? No, we don't. We like our space. We like our space between our neighbors. We don't want to be stacked on top of one another. I'm a senior. I couldn't afford that house on a good day. $3,000 a month? Good Lord, that's terrible. And I don't see anybody being able to afford that in these days and time. If they are, they must have one heck of a job and it's not here in Comstock. And how that would affect our schools with the buses going in and out of those apartments and everything to pick those kids up? What a nightmare. What a nightmare. You're not even counting those then. But listen to these people. And I'm going to say the same thing about Bess. I'm sure if they know anything about it, they're not going to want that either. And I'm totally with it. But after being here for 68 years, folks, it's, it was, it is a good place to live until they start trying to change things again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Wright and I live at 6487 Crestwood, which is the house at the bottom of the hill, used to be a dud at street. My parents built that house 60 years ago. And I have watched through my entire lifetime, everything change in that neighborhood when I lived there. The house that a lot of you people live in was a field. We had a ball playing in that field when I was a kid. My point, I was not prepared to come and speak today, but in the changes that I have seen in the years from where my house is located, there is a stop sign at Star Chief in Crestwood and a stop sign at Crestwood at the top of the hill in Crestwood, both sides. I came back out of my driveway in the morning and there is not a single car coming. And by the time my car is from the end of my driveway and in the road, there is somebody on my bumper. I watch people fly down Crestwood because it's a straight shot to Myers. And if you open this up and you put multifamily housing in there, I can tell you for myself, I go to Myers sometimes, multiple times in a day because I get home and I don't have what I went to the store for. So, you know, you're going to put multi people over there and they're going to, if they're coming through Buckskin, my street is the street they're going to go down. My house is the house they're going to go by. People on my street already have signs up in their front yard that say, slow down, children at play. We've put signs out in our front yard that say 25 mile an hour speed limit. There is a speed limit sign on my road, but I can guarantee you that 99% of the people down my street don't go 25 miles an hour. The majority of the people, I've watched them go from not stopping at the stop sign to what I presume to be about 50 miles an hour by the time they hit my driveway. And I just, you really need to consider everything. Multi, multifamily housing in that area does not give people a sense of pride of ownership. They will never, ever own that housing themselves, ever. You can go into Watts Construction and buy a condominium. It's yours. You own it. You can do whatever you want with it. It's yours. You have pride and ownership. If you're renting and you're paying $3,000 a month and you can't pay your rent, you're going to move out in the middle of the night and it's going to be there. So please just listen to us. I, I'm a lifelong resident here. My parents built the house 60 years ago and I'm sure you wouldn't want it in your backyard either. Thank you for listening.
Good afternoon. My husband and I moved our family from Mississippi to Comstock. Um, we're going on our sixth year. Um, we were looking for a quiet and safe place to live. Comstock has been wonderful and, uh, wonderful and a safe place to live. Um, it has been, we love, we love it here. Everyone has made some really good points and we also agree. Um, we are also opposing this rezon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dale Rudd. I live at, uh, 6160 Woodley Drive and this, we're coming up on seven months since we moved to Comstock. Um, I have some questions that I don't know will be answered today, but, uh, I'm wondering why there was not a traffic and infrastructure study done? If there was, I'd like to know more about that, um, especially since I would ask why that hasn't already been done when we have residents who have done that work on their own. Uh, my parents live east of Comstock and they cut through my neighborhood, which is the one on, I, I'm a little bit closer to 26th, but, um, my road is the first one, um, from, uh, H Ave. My kids cross the, um, H Avenue when they get off the bus, they cross it to go to their friend's house. So it's already dangerous. Like the first week we moved in, I think there were two accidents on H Avenue real close to us. There was an 11 year old girl that was hit on H Avenue in the spring as well. Um, so we already have some issues that are not addressed as far as traffic and roads. Um, as far as, um, this, the, the housing and the cost, uh, what will happen if it's not profitable? Um, our community, if you, if you're trying to get people from Comstock, most of us cannot afford that. Most of our houses, well, mortgages, mortgages don't even cost that much. Um, and I've lived in, well, I was wondering, will the high service part and the low maintenance be compromised? Like what happens? Does it, what does it become if they can't attract people to live in it? Um, and I know what it's like. I, I've lived in townhouses and you can, you know, the data's out there to show, uh, what it's like to have a bunch of stressed out people trying to survive and pay the bills and they're all packed into a small space. The issues compound. So what does it do for our community? I'm not seeing any return on this, especially if we aren't in the position where we can support more kids in the schools. And, um, between this and Bess, like why aren't we protecting green space? It's not just about feelings and having nature nearby. Like there's so many things that I can't, I don't have, can't fit it into three minutes. Like we have to protect that. That's part of what Comstock has to offer. And so, um, if we can showcase Comstock's strengths and point those things out, get away from the old reputation, we're changing for the better. And it's because of people who have stayed here and worked at it, as well as people like me who are coming in and seeing that good and wanting to move forward with that. We want to conserve what is good here. And it's just like I've said before, like listen to the people who are here. We're the ones who can make it better. And we may not always have the power, but we are going to use our voices. So please help with this and listen. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Gary Better. I live at 6869 East H Avenue. So ground zero for me. Uh, it's a 1,800 square, uh, square, uh, feet of property, actually adjacent to the 20 acres being proposed. Uh, proposal to rezone the 20 acres from single family homes to multifamily housing isn't just a technical change. It's a decision that could forever alter the character of the soul and, and character of our neighborhood. Our community's identity is at stake here. Uh, we choose this area for quieter streets, open space and sense of belonging. Families know their neighbors. Children play safely in their yards. Rezoning for high density condos risks turning that into crowded complexes, more traffic and less close knit environment we cherish. Picture the traffic jams on the roads that were never meant for over 100 cars. Emergency services already stretched thin. There's been numerous accidents on the intersection of 28th and East H Avenue within this, in this year alone, right Larry? Oh yeah. Over those 20 acres are rezoned and developed, the green space and character of tranquility, they're gone forever. We owe it to our future generation to protect what makes this community unique. We understand the land is meant to be built upon, but we expect any expansion in these 20 acres would continue to have the look and feel of the current north and eastern communities, I'm sorry, western communities, uh, followed by the, following the single family zoning requirements that has served our community so well. This isn't about resisting change. It's about making sure change doesn't erase what we love. My family and over 200 of our local residents, uh, living within our community are saying no to rezoning and yes to protecting the community's current character. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did receive, um, a few, uh, written submissions for public comment. I'll go through those right quick. Uh, Tracy Jackson at 6652 Woodley Drive wrote a letter of opposition. Susan and Stephen Bradford at 6932 Country Meadows Drive, letter of opposition. Matt Moravec at 3394 Buckskin Road submitted a letter, uh, letter of opposition. Claire Salter at 6679 Ormodo Drive, letter of opposition. Dave Buck at 3564 Buckskin Road, letter of opposition. Dale and Jennifer Wyatt at 3850 Buckskin Road, letter of opposition. Um, these have all been submitted to the planning commissioners as well.
Thank you, Casey. I'd look for a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, um, we'll open it for our discussion. Hope you want to lead us?
Sure. I understand what everybody is saying. I grew up on 26th Street when it was dirt road before they put Woodley in. So every one of you where you're at right now was my stomping ground at one time. So I understand it completely. The redwood, um, stuff, I was in on the planning commission when we brought them in on G Avenue and Gull Road, was all for it. They do a wonderful site. I honestly, in my opinion, I don't believe this is the right site to put this in. But this 20 acres, if it gets developed into quarter acre lots, you're going to have 80 houses in there, you're going to have the same amount of traffic, you're going to have the same amount of trouble. Everybody right now uses every one of them roads coming off of 28th Street, down Ringling, down any one of them is a thrill to get to Myers, 26th Street or somewhere through there. Everybody goes like a bat out of Hades on any one of them streets. H Avenue, it's like, how fast can we go up over them hills? Make our tummy tickle, you know? It's, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big thing. It's a big concern. I could say I'm all for redwood, I really am. And if people want to rent, I'm all for that. But someone's going to sell this land, somebody's going to develop it. The 10 acres next to it are going to get developed after that. So something's going to come in here. I watched Jack Smith start with Wildwood Hills, Woodley was the dirt road for 10 years. They used to come in with the oil trucks and put oil down on it to keep the dust down. It was a half a mile long. Delwood came out onto H Avenue and that was where it stopped. Plainfield, Crestwood, Twilight, they were, none of them were joined together. Plainfield and Crestwood, they came around Rosemont, a couple of streets there. They stopped at, um, uh, yeah, her house, Debbie's, Debbie Fishjohn's house. So I know every inch of every bit of that space. Um, where Larry Fautra Goodrich lives over there on 28th and, and H Avenue, big barn there, cattle there, had a big mean bull there. We'll go over and see the bull. And Jimmy Mike's built his house next to it. So I've seen all this. The Cat and Mel Farm was across the street. I've seen it all grow. I've seen every change there is out there. A lot of people here have been seven months, 11 months, six years, 10 years. They haven't been here 70 years. So I see what's going on, understand it. I honestly don't think this is the right spot for redwood. I wish Tim Chank would sell you the land right next to what you already have, but honestly, this 20 acre parcel, I don't believe in my heart is the right spot for it.
Joseph?
We heard a lot tonight, uh, a lot of good reasons and, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of very valuable points. I, um, I toured the redwood facility. I thought it was, uh, uh, an impressive project, uh, and, um, uh, uh, you know, a, a good development, but I agree with Bud. I don't believe that this is where, uh, uh, there's a lot of reasons why this might not be the right place for it. So, uh, but, uh, I think the appropriate thing for us to do is to table this and, and return a decision at our next meeting.
James?
I have lived in Comstock since 1989. I have heard the residents tonight speak and as being in real estate for 24 years, I also think where redwood wants to go is not the area for them at all. not the area for them at all. I'd say that they need to go to another area, not by the single-family homes in that right there. Thank you.
Amber?
Yeah, I think, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone coming out because it's pretty cool when the community gets involved, right? And that's, somebody said something about that Upjohn survey and where were the people at. I'll just tell you, like, I think less than 200 people took that survey, so I'm gonna take a little bit of an opportunity to, to say, please continue to be involved. Please continue to watch the Comstock government township page and see what's going on and participate with us because it's how we all get better together. That said, um, yeah, I mean, our, what, what we're tasked with is trying to find affordable housing for our residents, and I'm not sure that this is the solution for that. I also hear you with what makes Comstock attractive to live, rural, family environments, and I do think that our master plan is aligned with that. I think a lot of good examples were brought up today. One of the things that we have to consider is whether the use is allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited to the area than use is allowed under the current zoning. And I think a lot of cases were made today to say that, in fact, it would not be. So, I'm in alignment. I don't think this is the right location.
Sandy?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. We heard you, okay? We heard you. It does my heart good, and I just want to say, Comstock signs a place to grow because of our greenhouses, but with all of you here tonight, it just makes me want to change that place to call home and grow. So, I'm proud of all of you. And I, the one woman who stood up and talked about pride of ownership, I, that is something that every neighborhood needs to work on within their own neighborhoods. I see some people who need help and they don't get it because they can't physically or financially do it. And pride of ownership is strong in this room tonight with all of you sitting here, but I see some of our neighborhoods who need help with that. So, um, God bless you all. I heard you, and, um, I am not for this development either. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, our bylaws do not, or do not allow us to vote, so we will not be voting tonight because that goes against our bylaws. We have to have time to think about what's been said tonight and evaluate everything and be ready in the next meeting for what we think should happen. Kyle?
Mr. Chair, if I could, to the audience as well, the planning commission is a recommending body. They will have no official say in this in regards of approving the rezoning. That goes to the township board. So, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the board, and then the board will decide yea or nay on this rezoning request. So, I want to clarify that for anyone in the audience who thinks that the planning commission has the ability tonight to vote yea or nay on this.
And they do have the authority to vote against us if they want to. So...
We gotta be here again Monday night at 6 o'clock.
So, this will be tabled until December 11th, which is our next meeting, planning commission level.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, is there any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant that you would like them to respond to based on the comments tonight, so when they can come back prepared at their next meeting? Or does the commission have any questions, comments, concerns?
Anybody want to comment upon that?
I have no comment at all.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that if you don't have any questions of the applicant, the public hearing's closed. So, when you meet again, what you'll be doing is deliberating on the matter. You'll be making findings of fact. You know, to have a legally defensible position, you need to make findings of fact. You need to apply your standards in your ordinance, and that will, whatever you decide, would then be something that's defensible. So, the public hearing's closed. It's gonna be deliberation and decision by the board.
And there won't be any public hearing then?
Right.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is...
Mr. Chair, would it be a benefit to anyone who would like to leave at this time if they're not here for the rest of it?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe a five-minute break again to just, as you have three more items on the agenda?
Yes. There are three more items, too. Yeah. Three more.
She just got down. I'm gonna go back to the bathroom again.
No, we don't.
Okay, if everyone would please find a seat. I'll call the meeting back to order and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is accessory structure ordinance. How, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you, uh, the Planning Commission has been working some months on amending the standards for residential accessory buildings and structures. We've looked at increasing total floor area. We've reviewed as well how structures can be located on the property, if they're for agricultural purposes. What else have we looked at? Removing some, in essence, barriers to getting approval. Removing as well how many copies of a plan might be needed for special land use approval and review. So in essence, what you're doing tonight is having a public hearing on the proposed revisions as shown in your packet, and then from there, um, having discussion. So this is for accessory buildings and structures.
And this came to be because, um, when you have a lot of people coming to us asking for a variance, um, it's time to look at the ordinance. So we did look at the ordinance and, um, this is what we came up with. At this point, I'd look for a motion to open public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing for the accessory structure ordinance, text amendment.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in accessory structure ordinance. Do we have any public comment on this?
Are we going to do, is this the three-minute thing?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. I was just waiting for it to show up on the thing there. All right, ready?
As soon as you said your name, I started.
All right. Uh, John Paver. Uh, good evening. I'm here to, tonight to address serious conflicts of interest that affect any decision regarding the best, uh, facility. These conflicts-
This is not what we're talking about now.
Well, that's, that's okay. It correlates directly to this. Um, it's in regards to the, to the battery energy storage system. So unless there's, hold on, because see now, he interrupted my time. Hold on.
There is a battery energy storage system, public hearing.
This is not it.
This is an accessory dwelling unit.
So sheds. We have three different public, three more public hearings tonight.
Yes.
No wonder nobody stood up.
Come back.
You'll get your chance. Okay, what we're talking about right now is accessory buildings like, uh-
Pole barns and sheds.
Sheds and pole barns.
Garages.
Garages. Uh, we changed that ordinance and, and the new ordinance that we put together is what we're talking about right now. So if anybody wants to speak to that issue, now's the time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. So, my name's Pam York. I live at eighty-seven ninety-seven East Bain Street. Does this include like, um, small apartments for like your mom and dad or is this a just-
So that's separate, that's an accessory dwelling unit? So it would still follow the same lot size requirements, but it has different setbacks and such?
Okay, all right. But it's included in there?
Yes.
Any other questions or any other state, any other comment?
Just don't bring up the chicken thing.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Support.
Close the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I do want to ensure, we had our meeting, was that October sixteenth or October ninth? I don't know when it was, when we last discussed this. I want to make sure that these revisions are accurate and you are, you all feel confident to have this in our ordinance.
Has everybody read the ordinance, the new ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussions or questions? Amber?
No, I'm all set.
Well?
No, I'm all good. I just had one question that we're gonna, um, come back to another time is the, when there's an accessory building on a non-conforming lot without a dwelling or something. It's not in this ordinance, right?
I believe it's in here, isn't it?
Is it in here?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't read it all because I was out of town, but I knew the gist of it.
Casey?
Trying to find it, but I do see, um, number six.
Page fifty-two, bub.
Yeah.
At the bottom.
That's where I'm looking.
All- All accessory structures shall be located on the same lot as the principal residence, um, except if it's for ag purposes on ag land. So yes, so if somebody's zoned R1A with ten acres, they are not allowed to put on, um, a pole barn.
Thank you, Casey.
Correct.
Yes.
And that's the one I was asking, are we going to address that another time because so many people have pieces of land that they can't put a barn on.
If we wanted to address it now is the time, I don't think we're going to revisit the accessory structure.
No, we're going to send this to the township, so.
Is it a big enough change, Attorney Thal, if we wanted to change that tonight?
No, you can address it. Uh, that's fine. Um, as long as it's within the intent and the, you know, it's not a substantive change of something different. We're dealing with that. That is a provision that's being, uh, addressed in the, in the text. So if you want to address it further with some revisions to that, that's your option at the close of the public hearing.
Can you be specific about what you would propose?
Yeah, because there's a building down the road that caught on fire and burned down and they can't rebuild it unless they leave one wall up on it and there's no house on that structure, on that property anymore. So how do they rebuild their building that they spent thousands of dollars for that burned down that they can't rebuild?
Yes, so our current ordinance and this ordinance as revised does not allow for properties without a home to have a pole barn, shed, accessory structure. Commissioner Sherwood seems wanting to revisit that to maybe allow that on land that's not just zoned ag.
For clarity, principal use, not just pole.
Yes.
So the one thing I, I'm not aware of is in your ordinance, if you have something that addresses lawful, non-conforming uses, so it sounds like you're saying it's a lawful, non-conforming use. It burned down and now if they, if they demolish the whole thing, they can't rebuild it because our ordinance prevents that.
Yeah.
But typically, there's other provisions in your ordinance, not necessarily in this section, but in the lawful, non-conforming use section of your ordinance that would address like if something burns down and things of that sort. They talk about how much it burns down, certain percentages or the value that you can rebuild and it's still considered lawful, non-conforming. So I don't know.
Yes, there is a percentage. It's a, it's a percentage where there also is a, the term we use is you're allowed to perform general maintenance on this, whether maintenance is repairing three walls or a roof. I'm sure there are guidelines in our ordinance, but that's pretty much, if they were to demolish it completely, they cannot rebuild on that lot.
So I would say, you know, that's really a different concept than these, these provisions we're looking at tonight. So if that were a provision that you wanted to look at, that would really be under the lawful, non-conforming use provisions, not, uh, the residential accessory building and structure provision. You'd still keep this provision in there, but what you're talking about is a lawful, non-conforming use.
So we can come back to this at another time on doing some-
It's a different section of the ordinance.
But I will chime in, Commissioner Sherwood, um, would you be okay with, as our ordinance is written currently, that-
Yes.
On vacant land, you cannot have accessory structures?
Yeah. I just want to know if we're going to revisit this at some point. We have so many people that have land that can't have a building on them without a dwelling, so.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Sherwood, it's section seven point one-three, uh, D in our ordinance that talks about non-conforming structures and if they can be rebuilt or not.
Kyle, could you repeat that, please?
It is section seven point one-three, non-conforming uses in buildings, subsection D, and it states nothing in this ordinance shall prevent the reconstruction, repair, or restoration in the continued use of any non-conforming building or structure damaged by fire, collapse, explosion, acts of God, or acts of public enemy subsequent to the effective date of this ordinance wherein the expense of such reconstruction does not exceed sixty percent of the fair valuation of the entire building or structure at the time of such damage occurred. So there's a cap on that and when you can rebuild it, so.
Thank you.
If you would like to come back to that, it would be a different topic entirely.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Joseph?
No, I'm ready to, uh, you know, pass the sun.
James?
I'm ready to move forward.
Sandy?
Ready to vote.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we recommend approval of the updated accessory structure ordinance.
Support. As submitted in your packet?
As submitted in the packet, yes.
Support again. Okay, I want a roll call vote, please.
Okay, I can do that. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Chair Nowak? Oh, sorry, Chair Nichols.
Yes.
Chair Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the chicken ordinance. Kyle, you want to take it?
Sure, and for the, uh, those in the audience, the Planning Commission has been working on this for some months, um, as a backstory. You know, not every meeting, we have the ability to discuss different topics, especially given schedules, so, I mean, tonight you have four public hearings, it's just how things landed, um, for the availability. But what you are looking at tonight is changing the lot size, um, giving a rank system of lot sizes and the permitted hen total. And then from there as well, coops and chicken and pen shall be regulated as accessory structures. And we believe that's the majority of your changes. And this again came about because of some of the recent applications you've seen this year.
Okay, um, I guess at this-
Motion. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the chicken ordinance?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, th- this is really ridiculous. This chicken ordinance that you guys got is just to put more money in your pockets.
Oh, Jesus.
It, it's, it's just ridiculous. Who cares how many chickens you got for crying out loud? Think about what's more important, this battery plant that's going up by the school or the chickens? Chickens don't mean crap to these people. And then you're sitting there, oh, you can't have this chicken, you can't have that. What's next? Can't have no damn squirrels from your yard neither? Come on, people, get out of this chicken stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rachel Hines. Um, I have a question. What, what were the numbers before? So what is this changing from?
Six hens across the board, no matter how big the parcel was, it was residential.
Okay, and for residential, you said?
Yes.
And then is this now going to apply to, I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. She said it was six hens for residential across the board. And now is this new ordinance going to be for residential only?
Residential and then ag parcels, five acres or less.
Okay. And can I ask why ag is included in this?
At, at five acres, actually, we, we don't usually answer questions.
Oh.
Sorry.
I know. I was going to say sorry about that.
Is there a reason?
Uh, this is public comment, this is not quite an answer, actually.
I'm sorry.
So a lot of times what can happen is you make your public comment-
Okay.
And then when they close the public hearing, they can address questions.
Okay, so I guess I, my question is, I'm wondering why agriculture is included in this? And, um, the reason why I have that question is because agriculture is, is, um, considered farm. And so why put stipulations on farmland regardless of size, um, especially if, um, it's not budding up to neighbors and, um, interfering with other people's, um, property, houses, property lines, um, et cetera. So I, I do not think that agriculture, agricultural properties should be included in this. That's my statement. Thank you.
Again, my name is Justin Rowland. I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with my neighbor. Uh, I love chickens. I'm, I'm, you know what? I'm learning all kinds of stuff about being, being here tonight because when we moved in five years ago, I was told you can't have chickens. And now I'm finding out we can get some chickens. So, I like it. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I move that we close public hearing on the chicken ordinance.
Support.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on it.
Well, let's discussion.
Oh. No, that's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion.
Let's do, um, or start with Joseph.
I'd like to answer the lady's question about why we included ag under five acres. We had a specific situation where a, a property owner that owned, I think, two acres, uh, it happened to be in an agricultural residentially zoned area, but he had a small property and he had, I think, twenty-five chickens in his garage. And we had complaints from residential neighbors that lived next door because the chickens were not properly cared for and there was no way for us to manage that under the current ordinance. And so small residential properties are included in the res, small agriculturally zoned residential properties are included in this ordinance specifically for that reason, because they're not really farms. So, uh, that's the reason why we included that.
Your thing here says five acres or more, twenty-six hens. So I'm confused. So five acres, they have, they can only have six or they can go up to twenty-six?
The ordinance applies to res, residential properties and agricultural properties under five acres.
Look, Kyle.
Yes.
So a residential property, that is, so a residential property, if it's zoned residential, even if it's larger than five acres, maxes out at twenty-six hens. An agricultural property that is greater than five acres does not have a regulation on how many hens you can have. You just have to follow the, um, the, the best determined practices, right? The ag standards for care of them.
Well? Amber?
I'm good. I'm happy for people to have more chickens.
James?
I'm good.
Sandy?
Another reason that, uh, we worked on this ordinance is because we had residents who asked to have more chickens, um, even though we do have problems with, um, ordinance violations on them. So if any of you out there are thinking about getting chickens, make sure you follow the ordinance and get your permits and, um, keep your chickens locked up where they belong so you don't have neighbors fighting because that's what we have a lot of problems with. Thank you.
Okay. Again, we did the chicken ordinance because we had so many complaints and so many, um, people coming before us wanting to change the classification of their property. And we wanted to clarify it. So, thank you all. And I guess at this point-
What do we do?
I'd look for an, uh-
Motion.
A motion to-
I move that we, uh, recommend the approval of the amended chicken ordinance.
Support.
I guess this one we do need a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, six ayes, zero nays.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the battery energy storage ordinance. And before I get into that, I'd like you to know all the work that we have done. We started it in twenty-four and we actually passed an ordinance then that we thought met all the needs of the township. When reviewing it, when the new board came in, it got reviewed by the township and they sent it back to us. And at that point, they created a moratorium. And the moratorium was made up of three board members from the township and two planning commission members and one alternate planning commission member. During that period, we brought in all kinds of professionals and experts about, actually, we brought in the head of the, uh, energy for the state of Michigan. She's in charge of all, uh, renewable energy. And she talked with us as well as multiple other people. Michigan, University of Michigan came, um, and all those things, um, and as well as the, uh, CIP, which is the energy people that, uh, we're talking to now. We got lots of information and we've been working on it for- We got lots of information and we've been working on it for, uh, all this year. And at this point, um, we're at a point where we have to decide where we go from here. And having said that, um, what we tried to do was make something workable for the township so that we could control, have some control over what was gonna happen. And that's what we tried to do. And the first location, we found to be too close to the school system. But because the township is so small, well, I shouldn't say small, we have a lot of people in the township. And finding open area for a system like that was very difficult and almost non-existent. So we looked and, and we then came up with what we now put into an ordinance. So with that, I would entertain a motion to open public hearing, unless you have something else?
Yeah, um, the ordinance in our agenda is pretty much the same one as, was it last week or two weeks ago?
Right.
Um, the only change is now that we have this battery energy storage system, large off-site overlay district, um, in the districts where it is allowed. And then Attorney Thaw did provide, well, do you want to discuss this after the revisions?
Yeah. But I would say, so the last meeting, you had a public hearing on the bulk of the revisions that you've made to this ordinance. So you started with the ordinance that was already adopted. You've worked through over the past, uh, 10 months or so and came up with, uh, what you consider to be a workable ordinance. And I think people need to understand that there's a Public Act, Public Act 233 of, uh, 1990, or of 2023, which basically gave developers an option to go to the state of Michigan and preempt our local zoning. So if they choose to go to the state of Michigan, they can go through a state process to have their site approved. It doesn't matter what the zoning district is under the state law. It has setback requirements, not zoning requirements. They don't care what our zoning districts are. And so that's one option that a developer can go. And it just bypasses Comstock Township. We don't have any control over that. The other option is to do it what, what the township has chosen to do and did previously with the ordinance. And what they're still doing with this revised ordinance is to have what's called a workable ordinance. And a workable ordinance is to say, hey, we'd rather have some control over what happens than no control over what happens. And so we're gonna put in standards that are more stringent than the state standards. The state standards are very weak in terms of setbacks, things of that sort. And so the, the workable ordinance is intended to put in more stringent standards. Uh, one of the standards that they, that was addressed at the last public hearing was a 2,000-foot setback from sensitive areas. That's not in the state law. If they go to the state of Michigan, they don't have to do a 2,000 setback from sensitive areas. There's a, a 300-foot requirement from their fence line to a building. That building could be a school, it could be any type of building. It could be any dwelling, 300 feet, that's it. Our ordinance, we tried to put in more stringent standards to be a workable ordinance, but if you go so stringent that they cannot come into the township under your ordinance provisions, then you force them to go to the state. And from that standpoint, they have already started the process to go to the state of Michigan. So there's a process to follow, they've started that process. Um, and that's just where it is. I mean, it's, we're trying to work out something that retains local control over it, and that's where we are. So last meeting, we had a hearing on the bulk of the revisions. There was still one item that was not subject to that hearing, which is the subject of this hearing. So the subject of this hearing is specifically on the overlay district. And that stems from a presentation by CIP, where they came and said, hey, we found a different site, alternate location away from the school. And that site would fit in with this overlay district, and that's what the language does. It fits, fits that site. And so that's the subject matter of this public hearing tonight. Um, then both items will be addressed at a later time, both public hearings. No action was taken on the first public hearing from their last meeting. At this meeting, no action would be taken on this provision either. And so then it would come at a next meeting or even subsequent to that, where a recommendation would be made by the planning commission regarding all the revisions to the ordinance. So I just wanted to kind of preface where we stand right now, but...
Thank you. So now I think we can go into public hearing. Uh, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to go into a public hearing regarding Comstock's, um, Energy Ordinance 543.
Support.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hello. My name's William Knight, I'm a resident of Comstock. I just wanna say beforehand, I'm speaking in my resident capacity, not in any official capacity. Seems we're at a crossroads. Developers threaten to trigger PA 233 process with a formal letter to the supervisor aiming to strip the township of local control and hand final say to the MPSC. But as of 2 PM today, I checked, no application has been filed with the MPSC. This is not an escalation, it's an intimidation designed to cut the community out of its own decision-making. Meanwhile, internal pressure to end the moratorium is intensifying. On May 19th, the Township Board voted 4 to 3 to lift, lift the moratorium. That effort continues, driven in part by trustee Robert Pratt. A recent FOIA request revealed emails in which he pressured our former township attorney to fix this and, quote, "end the moratorium entirely." When she refused to overstep her role, he replied with, quote, "Maybe it's time we rethink our working relationship," unquote. That's not leadership, it's intimidation. Soon after, it looks like, the attorney was pushed out and replaced under that very pressure. Nothing was said in the public, no public record, board was ever voted. We don't even know what happened. We don't know if she was resigned, if she was pushed out or anything, because there's no public record. We were all left in the dark and a trustee used private pressure to force change only a full board can make. History proves people fight back. In 2022 to 2023, voters in 12 Michigan townships recalled 12 officials who approved big energy projects. We will not stay silent. The October 30th public hearing made the community's position crystal clear. Zero support for the battery energy storage system near homes, near schools, near population centers. You tabled it at the last meeting, that was a right call, you should do it again this time. Ending the moratorium now is only a fallback and, and will only leave us on outdated ordinances that we have already proven are not the strongest in the state. We'd hand the, we'd hand the developer exactly what they want and fast-track to Lansing. So in ending, I urge this commission to strengthen the ordinance with science-based setbacks, fire suppression standards, and school proximity buffers. Stand with the residents and not under pressure from trustees or developers. This is about safety, this is about local control, and it's about who decides Comstock's future. Do not let threats, coercion, or leaguer maneuvers silence this community. Keep this moratorium, strengthen the rules, and let Comstock's voice be heard.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Dickinson, and I am here as representative of the Comstock School Board. And, um, I have a statement that has been, that has been, that I prepared and then one that they have prepared for me to speak on. Is our board's understanding that the discretion of where the CIP may place its best is this, is a, is a decision that is within the discretion of the authority of Comstock Township Council? Join us as, as we voice our concerns opposing the best for our students, for our community, and for our future. The dangers and the potential harm of placing the battery energy storage system in Comstock. Currently, a Danish company named Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners, CIP, has, has proposed to build a battery storage system, BES, adjacent to the construction site of the new Comstock STEM Academy, close to the Comstocks, Comstock Elementary School. While the BES may play a vital role in the transition towards renewal, renewable energy by storing electricity from, from sources such as solar, wind, for later use, the proposed BES in Comstock intended to pull, uh, energy from the Jaguar substation during our, during times of low demand and then sell the energy back to the grid during times of high demand. Simply put, this is not green energy, but rather a company seeking to profit from placing its best next to the substation regardless of the project's proximity to our community schools. In May 2025, the, the district commissioned a third-party study conducted by CTC Energy of Ann Arbor to evaluate the proposed location of the BES and its potential danger to the district. The study reported that the BES should be no closer than one mile to any school. Acting on this report on, on August 2025, I'm sorry, August 25th, 2025, this Comstock Public School Board of Education voted unanimously to oppose the BES and the proposed location. While BES offers some environmental and economic advantages, BES also proposes significant safety and environmental and operational risks that must be carefully managed to prevent harm to people, property, and ecosystems. One of the most serious dangers associated with the BES is a thermal runaway, a chain reaction that occurs when a battery cell overheats and triggers a neighbor, a neighboring cell to do the same. This can lead to intense fires, explosions, and release of toxic gases such as hydrogen, fluoride.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No application has been filed? Told you they were snowballing you. William just told you that, too. There's something that you guys ought to know about this company. What are you guys, Copenhagen or another company? I got it right here. They sold... They sold 50% of the company in 2020. They want your investment in this, which some of you already have invested in it. I know a few people that have. I'd pull out now, because you're gonna lose your butts. There's already two court documents on the docket. I also found them, too. Right here, it says, "CIP sells 50% stake, 500 MW energy storage project." First manufacturer, fund manager, Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners, devastated half of the stake of the Coburn Irish Battery, or British Battery Energy Storage Product still at stake. So actually, they sold out already. Yeah, it's right here, wanna read it?
Keep your comments to the board, please.
Um, we do not want this here. You guys sitting there trying to tell us it's gonna be a mile away from the school? No, it's only half mile. Bus taking away our golf course. And who wants a recreational facility put there for their kids when there's a bomb sitting right in the back? Come on, you guys. This is why we are calling senators. We will have our say in this, not just the board. And like I said, Mr. Sherwood should not vote on this, he's too close to this. It's a conflict of interest. We do not want him voting on this, and he shouldn't be able to vote on this. If he wants to go dinner with him, fine. But he knows more than we knew three years ago. We didn't know about this for three years. The residents were kept out of it until Ben got in here. We're kept out of a lot of secret meetings that you guys had and stuff. There's only three people that we trust on this board. That is Sandy Bloomfield, not this attorney, we trusted the other attorney, and, uh, Ben Martin, and Mr. Amos. Those are the only ones that we really trust. We don't even trust our zoning. You pay $20,000 for what? Uh, this is really, you know, ridiculous. Do not rezone this land for them. They're not gonna come back on the people, they're gonna come back on you guys if something happens.
My name is Jason Tollhurst, and I'm a resident of Comstock. I'd like to start by thanking this commission, uh, for listening to the community and doing their best to craft recommendations to better ensure the safety of this community while still allowing a pathway for infrastructure improvements and green energy development. I strongly urge this community, or this commission and this community to take seriously the recommendations put forth by CTC Engineering and their independent evaluation of the proposed BES. They have taken the time to evaluate the project, including its location, method of construction, type of batteries used, expected capacity, fire suppression and safety protocols, working directly with SIP themselves, and still recommend a minimum safe distance of at least one mile from our schools. We should not deny ourselves our right to self-determination to, and accept such risks uh, to the safety of our children or submit to the exploitation of our resources for the profits of a private industry. We have the right to be cautious. We have a duty to be good stewards to our community and our resources. Last year, corporations like Google, Microsoft, and Oracle spent a combined $640 billion on turning hundreds of square miles across America into data centers and battery energy storage facilities. These communities now face increased electric, electric costs, noise pollution, loss of water and collapsing wells, and many other problems. SIP has already stated that there's no plans for green energy to support this BES. I have not heard of any planned industrial projects which would require 200 megawatts of energy. Our community is not witnessing an explosion of population where we expect to have some 100,000 new residents in the coming years. It begs the question, what is the best for, then? A data center. One was already proposed just across the street in Pavilion. Though it has been put on hold, we would be foolish to believe that we will forever, uh, that that will be forever, or that they won't just try to come build one here in Comstock. And those data centers do not just stop at one, they tend to build in clusters once one is taken root. It is expensive to build the infrastructure needed to support AI data centers, and building them in clusters reduces latency between the buildings so they can connect them and make larger pools of computing power. If we allow this BES, the only future for Comstock is a square mile of batteries and data centers drinking up all of our groundwater, driving away our birds with noisy cooling systems, and stealing billions from our communities over their, uh, over their operation as they provide our, as they will not provide our township with any jobs. They will fight every penny we try to tax from them, and they will increase the cost of living for Comstock and reduce property values due to no one wanting to live around a data center park. We must send a clear message to SIP that we do not want them here. Strengthen the rules, protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, I, uh, had a whole thing prepared, and then I saw the ordinance, and I saw that we struck out agriculture, um, as what, uh, what you would look at as a special use for a BES facility. And, and one of the things I came to say was that I don't think the zoning has caught up with the technology, and I can't be more supportive of the ordinance change. I'm so proud to be in this room with a community that has stayed till past 8 on a, on a work night, in a school night, for their kids. And I'm proud to see the effort happening from this side of the table. I know not all the power lies within Comstock, but I do want to just share a few things from what I had prepared and also just kind of a thought that we should think about moving forward. Again, remember, my property is the one that borders this, right? 45% of my property is in their quote-unquote "plume zone." They wanted to put one 50 feet from me. And unlike the developer who, uh, is proposing the baseball field, he, no one reached out to me to be a neighbor, to be a piece of the community, right? I found out about it through this. So I wanna share a little bit, just as a, you know, as an IT, you know, uh, expert, I guess I should say. I have eight years in the industry. Um, consider the, consider the outcome of a failure, okay? Um, your charter map or your future land use map right there, this would sit dead in the center of what's supposed to be, um, uh, what was it? Uh, suburban density housing, it'd sit right dead in the center of that. Basically create a mile radius dead zone for your future 2030 plan. It's not aligned with that. But think about what would happen, right? The important thing about a lithium ion fire, and I'm gonna go through this quick, but the important thing about lithium ion fire is that it can last for days or weeks, even with fire department response. They might be able to contain it, but it burns extremely hot, and it could last for days or weeks. So with that, next to a school, but what are we looking at? A, a very long period of absences? What about damage? What about fallout? Not just from the smoke? I mean, there's, the, the developer themselves said that the, uh, contaminants in the fire, if the BES were to fail, would be similar to a house fire. I live 750 feet from the proposed one. I would prefer not to smell and breathe a house fire for a day, three days, five days. I'd also prefer that students that go to that school don't have to live with that. And what happens if one of those fires break out and we have a fantastic fire department response, but we get hit with the 60 mile an hour winds that that area experiences regularly? Or a tornado in the spring area? How far does the fire spread? How far do the contaminants spread? It's something that will impact our entire, you know, six miles is... You know, six miles is not that far, you know, for contaminants like that to spread. And a lot of us are on well water. A lot of us have wildlife in our backyards. I'm not going to live in an environment where I'm putting a child to bed and there's a possible fire 750 feet away. It's not the right call. But like you said, they have leverage possibly by going to the state, but they're on a timer. They're on a timer because federal government is straying away from this. This isn't green energy. They have a political timer, and it's running out. And they're going to put pressure on you because they realize they have a bad product. Take a look at solar panels, please. They make considerably better neighbors. They're much better for this environment. They don't have the risks. They don't have the fallout. Green energy is not the enemy. This product is. It's bad, and they know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. John Paver. I'm here tonight to address a series of serious conflicts of interest that affect any decision regarding the battery energy storage system facility. These conflicts require recusal under Michigan law before any votes are taken on best approval. Conflict number one. Township clerk Bochamp will vote on best approval at the township board level. Her brother is the Comstock Fire Chief. Her sister-in-law works for the fire department and handles the fire department payroll. This creates a clear conflict of interest under Michigan law, and this conflict exists regardless of any promises the developer may have made. Best facilities require specialized department response capabilities. This is not optional. It's mandated by the state and federal safety regulations. This means that the best approval inherently requires fire department to expand, increase department budget, additional equipment purchases, enhance training programs, expanded responsibilities, potentially additional staffing. This expansion directly benefits the fire chief through a larger, better-funded department and enhanced professional standing and increased authority. This also benefits Nicole Bochamp's sister-in-law through increased job security and expanded responsibilities. Under Michigan compiled law 15.323, no public servant shall have any direct or indirect cuniori interest in any contract, purchase, sale, or service to or by the local government. This conflict is inherent in the natural best approval. For the second one, Robert Pratt. I obtained emails through the FOIA Act requests that document Bob Pratt's bias and inherent interference with proper government processes. In July 25, emails to township attorney at the time, Catherine Kaufman, Pratt complained about legal assistance being provided regarding the best moratorium. He stated that this assistance eroded my trust and undue damage that had been done and to get the moratorium ended. Most significantly, Pratt wrote, perhaps it's time to reassess our working relationship. This is a threat. Shortly after these emails, attorney Kaufman was removed and replaced by Robert Thaw from the same firm. This pattern shows that trustee Pratt predetermined the outcomes he wants. Best approved, moratorium ended, regardless of the proper review process. This bias and predetermination requires his recusal voting on best. On November 3, I sent formal recusal letters to both Nicole Bochamp and trustee Bob Pratt. I haven't heard anything back. And then I also sent the same FOIA that Mark Mart also submitted. And then the township requested an additional 10 business days for them to receive documents or look for documents that they already had in their possession. I would request that the planning commission ask Robert Thaw right here to please enlighten us as to whether or not that they will recuse themselves for the clear conflicts of interest and inherent bias and in whether or not that... What's the justification for the FOIA? Tomorrow morning, I'm going to be filing TRO for bad faith and for bad faith in filing for extending the additional 10 business days. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Yerkes. I live at 8797 East Main, which, as I heard through the grapevine, that the best was going to be really close to our house. I really appreciated that you guys worked through this. It sounds like you put a lot of effort into it and you thought of a lot of people that were experts in their field, but nobody said anything to me. Nobody talked to anybody on our street. We didn't know anything about this happening. The neighbors that came in and spoke to you so heartfeltly about the development in their community, that's where I'm at. This is where I am. We have a school that's going up, a multimillion-dollar school. That conversation wasn't had with the school board before they started to build the school that we paid for, that we voted on to build for our kids? I was like, so excited. We're doing something good for our community and our children. And then we're going to put this on top of it. And yes, maybe it's moved to the golf course, but people live there, too. That we are... It's a residential area. I don't care what it's zoned. If it's zoned agricultural, I live on East Main. I drive up and down all those roads every single day. I will tell you, people live there. It is not a farming community anymore. There's not hundreds of acres and a few cows. It's kids and people that have spent their life earnings to build houses, to grow their families. I understand that the development that you wanted to put out on H and 28th Street is important because we do need housing. But we don't need housing that will be... That's not good for our community. And we've all talked about this. We had many people, and I wish we had stayed because it was such an empowering thing. And I'm so sorry that I haven't been more visible, but I will be. And all of this should have never happened without a public speaking with the community that's going to affect. Thank you. Oh, thank you so much for being here. You guys really do hard work. I appreciate it. It's not an easy job. I just don't like this.
Thank you.
Another thing I want to bring to the people's attention is I have talked to several senators, and I have talked to several lawyers. You people do not have a booklet in place in case of an emergency with this plant amongst the whole entire township, which makes it illegal. You would be illegal putting it in. You have no backbone book saying this, 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 and this. And when I get that from a senator and I get this from attorneys, you're putting yourself up for a lawsuit. And personally, I don't want this piece of crap across from me. You've got, right across from that field where you're going to put this thing, you have got numerous neighborhoods. Yeah, you've got some social security that somebody would like to get rid of so he wouldn't have to pay it. I won't mention any names. But we've lived there. I've lived in my house for 45 years. I lived back behind the Point Standard Gas Station the rest of my life when I was younger. I don't want to see this town go to hell, but it's going to if it goes in. I can guarantee it. But like I said, I've already talked to some senators. I've talked to three or four or five different lawyers. And they said that is illegal to put that in until you have a safety plan book in place, which I haven't seen. If anybody else has, somebody tell me. Thank you for your hard work, and I hope we're going to be done.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lawrence. I had a house at 8042 East Michigan. That house, when I was there, the propane truck slid down the hill at the gravel yard and got hit by an Amtrak. When I was there, Conrail went by, and they spilled diesel fuel three feet wide past Battle Creek. Nothing is absolute certain. When I worked for FEMA, I did the emergency planning zone for Palisades and Cook nuclear plants. That is a lot harder to wash away than a lithium issue. I know this battery is safe, and I trust this program. A lithium, an LMC battery, magnesium cobalt, that will burn. You can't put it out. This is not magnesium cobalt battery. This is a iron phosphate battery. I trust this battery. I have four of them in my basement, 20 kilowatts. What's in my basement that bothers me is radon gas. I have an abatement system to get the radon out of the house, not the lithium. This battery is going to help me, but I have solar power to put to the grid. We're all connected. If something happens in Detroit, something happens at Niagara Falls, our lights go out or there's a strain on our system. Texas, they're on their own thing. Also in Berry County, there's several megawatts. I don't know exactly how much of solar going online. We have our own solar. We mow with electric. We drive electric. The world is changing. We need a place to store the energy that's coming online. 98% of the new energy is renewable. Nobody can get gas turbines. It's taken over two years to retool Palisades, and it's not back online. That's 0.9 gigawatts, over 900 megawatts. The Chinese install 1 gigawatt every eight hours of solar. We need to step up. We need projects like this. This is a safe battery. Sorry for... I hear so much misinformation coming through here. So it's a big challenge for you guys. I don't want the state to step in. I'd rather the local community drive how things happen, but the state will step in. So good luck. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. You guys are in a no-win situation. You guys have been doing this for a long time. I think your ordinance is a hell of a lot better than anything else. And I'm glad you guys are maybe going to adopt it or hopefully adopt it. My frustration is you guys work hard, all of you, in that you sit up here and you get personally attacked. There is no reason to personally attack anyone on this board. And I'm sorry you have to deal with it, but good luck with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Hathaway, 3617 Silver Hills. I'm not here representing anyone but myself. I think the person who spoke two times, two places before me, is incorrect. One thing is the iron phosphate battery still burns. It just is at 100... It's approximately, I don't have the data right in front of me, approximately 100 degrees higher before it ignites. But it still will ignite. It still will burn. It still will put into the air considerable contamination if there is any wind blowing. I already produced for you documentation that shows what the wind velocity will do. In Michigan, it's 17 miles an hour average. If you look at 17 miles an hour, it takes seconds, minutes, maybe even up to an hour if you start to get a mile away. But please make sure the facts are right on this thing when you... Listen, I'm not blaming the board for anything, but I am concerned when there's misinformation handed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others... Anyone else want to speak? If not, I would look for a motion.
I move that we close public hearing on the battery energy storage ordinance.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we're looking at old business. Do we have any old business?
Any discussion needed?
Yeah, we can discuss it. Sorry. James, you want to start?
I'm looking at this ordinance, and there was a letter given to us by their attorney, Mr. Essie, dated October 28. And I'm just asking for clarification that I just want to make sure that I'm clarified. That number 18D here on this thing right here we were given here, if I'm reading that right, this letter right here.
Okay, so this...
It's on page nine here.
This one that you were handed out is from attorney Thaw.
Attorney Thaw, yes. Yes, that's what I'm questioning. Is that number D... huh? Yeah, our attorney, yes. I want to make sure that this is in place.
Yeah, so...
This is what we're considering. Right, that's what I want to make sure of.
Yeah, so after you've closed both public hearings, now, you know, you're still kind of deliberating on the whole package, you know, and what issues you're looking at, what you think you can still tweak and improve. And that's kind of what I sent based upon people's comments, trying to address a lot of the concerns that I heard at the first public hearing and address, you know, some of the issues regarding decommissioning, you know, that, you know, some of the comments were previously that they wanted to include salvage value. And my position is we don't ever include salvage value. And for those reasons, I kind of stated in that comment. You know, to me, it entices them to just walk away from a project, and it's our problem to scrap it and clean it up, you know, with the bond monies. If the salvage value's in place, you know, then they have incentive if they pack up to decommission it themselves because then they're going to be able to salvage the assets if they think it's worth something. And they'll do that rather than just walk away from the site. So I think that that's probably a better... And it's a little inexact on salvage value. What is the salvage value? We don't have to get into that.
Right. I appreciate...
So that's kind of my thought on that.
Thank you.
Chosen?
This version of the ordinance is what I'm happy with. I'm... I'm... I don't have anything that I would necessarily want to change in here.
Oh?
Attorney Thaw told me last time that I shouldn't comment on it.
Oh, you should not. You're right. You should excuse yourself.
Well, I'm going to recuse myself from this, so...
Amber?
Yeah, a couple things. The first is that this is a really hard position to be in because I think that, honestly, I think our hands were tied in October of 2024 when the first ordinance was passed because we no longer have the option. Unless that or the township board were to get rid of that ordinance and we just had no ordinance at all, we don't have that as a viable option. We have to either live with the ordinance as-is that was passed in 2024 that will be and is technically on the table when the moratorium is lifted on December 31. That will be in place unless we are able to put together something that is better and make a recommendation to the township board and then hopefully have them adopt those amendments. So there is an ordinance in place. We don't have the ability, certainly not at the planning commission level anyway, but we don't have the ability to say, we don't want this. That's gone. So now we have to try to come up with what we can do to make lemonade out of lemons. I don't know, right? We've got to come up with what we can do to make it the best possible situation for our township. And I think we've put a lot of work in to do that. I think there's still work to do. I know we talked about having another joint... We voted last meeting to have another joint moratorium meeting next week, and I think that still needs to happen. I have a question for you, attorney Thaw. I can't find it in here anywhere that it specifies... And I swear, I'm sure you're going to be able to point it out right away, but that it specifies that overlay district.
Yeah, that's at the very end. So it's the last page, or second-to-last page. So it's the last page, or second to last page.
I kept looking for it at the front where we specify the zoning, so that's my mistake, but thank you.
On the bottom of page two, it specifies battery energy storage overlay district.
But it doesn't specify what that is, which is what I was looking for.
It isn't here. I mean, that, that would be separate. We would have to indicate-
No.
So if you look at, so if you look at the language, what it says is that a battery energy storage system large offsite overlay district is established. We're in a battery energy storage large offsite. Is a special land use in any zoning district on a parcel of at least-
100 acres.
40 contiguous acres, meeting the additional requirements of Article 4, Section 4.61, which are the general requirements, and at no time would the district occupy more than 200 acres of land in the township in the aggregate. So basically, it allows one system to come into your township, and then-
Page 18.
You would have no more land available for that.
I'm sorry, maybe I don't understand. So this would be a floating district then?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
And that's what was discussed, was a floating overlay.
That was what was discussed on the meeting when-
Yes, it was. And then I, my comments were incorrect. I didn't read this carefully enough, because what I intend to support is the original definition of an overlay district that was a fixed overlay district on the southern portion of the agricultural township property. So if this, if this revision includes the floating overlay district, then I'm afraid I am not in favor.
Yeah, and that's what it does.
Sandy?
I have a couple of things, of course. My first thing is, our definition, this board's definition, and CIP's definition of a workable ordinance are not the same. And I feel like the first ordinance that was done before most of us planning commission members came on was written for CIP to come in. So with that being said, I do have some more things that I feel like might be, needed to be changed, and I was, have been a big one with the surety bond, and I am also looking forward to do the next meeting with the moratorium committee. But one thing I'd like to discuss with that is, instead of a surety bond, looking at a dedicated trust so that the money would be actually dedicated for decommissioning, and it would be held in a trust so it could be never used for anything else. The other thing that I'd like to work on is, when or if something does happen for decommissioning, what, what are we thinking about for the future use of that land, wherever this ends up? I mean, are we going to put R1C there? Are we going to try and put it back to industrial? Or are we going to do farmland? I mean, I think that's something we need to think about that we haven't even talked about. And then, my husband and I took a road trip today. We actually wanted to go see a battery storage. So there is one about 40 mile, 40 minutes from here down in Coldwater. It is only 100 megawatts, but it was an education, so I would suggest anybody who has the time or would like more information, it is ran by Jupiter, and I was very impressed with the people in the company, but what I found was, it was out in the middle of nowhere. It was in the middle of nowhere. So if you do happen to go down there, and, but before you go, we were told to tell everyone that, yes, you're welcome to come. Get on our website for Jupiter and email us. We will get right back to you. We will call you, and you're welcome to come down. We won't let you inside of the fence, but we're here to ask, answer any question that you have. I mean, they were very welcoming. I was really impressed with the company. The other thing was, just when, if you do go, just remember that that's only 100 megawatts down there. We're, we're looking at 400 here, so there's a huge difference. I mean, the sound of it, I learned about when they start to replace batteries, which I think is another thing that we need to have a little more discussion on, because my husband and I had this disagreement last night about how batteries are replaced, and I'm like, "No, they just take them out and put more in," and he's like, "No, they do this," and I'm like, "No, they don't." Actually, we ended up both being right, which I was kind of surprised. So it's not very far, and it is called, I believe, what was it called?
Tibbetts.
Tibbetts, yes. It was called Tibbetts. So just Google that or Jupiter, and they'll get back with you, and you're welcome to go down to that. And then the other thing I want to say that we are the planning commission, which you all know, and it is us to do a recommendation to the township board. It is not for us to decide what happens with this. It is the township board, not us. We can only recommend. The other thing that I thought was really cool about Jupiter, I'm going to jump back to that real quick because I remembered what I forgot, is talking to, we talked to the supervisor from the township, I talked to the chair of the planning commission, everybody was great. I mean, they're happy with what they're doing, but they're doing it in smaller increments out in the middle of nowhere again, and they have the land for that. But what impressed me was how Jupiter collaborated with the residents. They told me that any resident who had an issue, Jupiter walked up to them after they left the podium and said, "Can we come meet with you? We will meet with you wherever you want to explain what is happening so you understand it." And I just really felt that that was a real positive thing for the residents. So wherever you're at with this, whether you're for it, against it, I went to get an education. I still don't know where I'm at with the thing, but, you know, for what it was worth, I learned a lot. So feel free to get online and go. It's not a long drive. That's all I have, other than I would like to meet with the moratorium committee again.
Thank you. You're going to say anything? Well, we're not going to be doing anything tonight on this. We're, um...
We're tabling it until the 20th? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, well, we've basically done all we can tonight, haven't we?
You could still move on it tonight, or you have options.
I think we're done.
Okay.
So what you should, you need to make a motion as to what you're going to be doing. So if you want to-
We moved the motion last time. Do we have to make a new one again?
I, I think you should, because we just closed our public, this public hearing. That was on that text in that public hearing, you know, so I think you should make another motion to set it however you want to set it for the whole thing to be considered.
I move that we table this until we're able to meet on November 20th for further discussion with ourselves and the moratorium committee.
Support.
Roll call?
Ms. Sherwood, do you want to abstain from this vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Weintraub?
Yes.
Ms. Kreitzer?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Treasure Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
Thank you.
And the time of that meeting, Casey?
6:00 PM. Next Thursday.
Do we have anything in old business?
Nope.
Any other business?
No, sir.
We have citizen comment now, and the rules still stand with what I said in the beginning. I'll go ahead and read them again. "A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make an appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful."
All right. I'm going to finish my last thing, sorry. John Paver, I had to rush to the last one, so sorry. The last part was that I wanted to commend this commission for implementing the moratorium to thoroughly study the best. Your careful independent review is exactly what Michigan law requires. I want to say that, you know, the commission has conducted itself properly, maintaining independence and carefully reviewing this important project. Township board must do the same. Officials with conflicts must recuse. Officials with bias must recuse. This law requires it. I want to ask that your recommendation to the township board include the following. First, that any officials that have conflicts of interest must recuse themselves from all best votes under MCL 15.323. And that the township provide full disclosure of the fire department impact analysis, including projected budgets increases and required departmental expansion for best emergency response. And fifth, that no best, no final best approval decision be made until all conflicts of interest are properly resolved, and that all FOIL documents have been received by the public and reviewed with the appropriate timeframe for them to respond. I thank you again for this commission, for your time, your independence, and your careful consideration of this project's impacts on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen's comment?
I'm Matt Turner, live 6358 Plainfield Avenue. Something's been on my mind for a couple of years now, actually, and it seems particularly relevant with all the discussion of the traffic on H, is, there's a lot of foot traffic that goes up and down H Avenue, all the way between Gull, all the way down. I see people go down, I've seen wheelchairs on the side of the road because there's no place for them to properly be safe away from traffic. And I don't know the process, but it seems relevant that we should think about pedestrian safety in a lot of these places because there is, there are people who walk up and down these roads because it's the only way they have to get to the places they need to go. Because you have people who walk up H, up 26, to get to the Meyer, and they are on, at best, a narrow strip of a shoulder. So, that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Of course.
I, I also want to echo just the thanks to the committee that's done a really good job reviewing this. It's, it's definitely a heavy thing to consider where it could go, and I understand the challenges. I won't take up much more of our time tonight, it's been a long night, but I do want to comment on what another gentleman had said earlier about the chemical makeup of these batteries and the fact that they're a safe battery. There's, there's truth to that. The battery is more stable, lithium ion is more stable than cold salt, but there's also truth exactly to what the following gentleman said, which is, yeah, they still ignite, and they ignite at a higher temperature, sure, but once you get there, it's the exact same scenario. I worked in this space for eight years. That is a true fact. It's, it's why you see electric cars, you know, on the side of the road that have similar properties. And I think the gentleman who came up here and stated the differences between the batteries as well, he stated he had a 20 kilowatt wall in his home. That's fantastic. I have a lot of friends who do the exact same thing, but there's two very important key differences. One, that battery wall is installed and owned by him, and what it does is it draws from the grid when the grid does not demand, or it draws from solar panels, however he has it configured to draw, and it benefits him specifically because battery is cheaper, or battery, energy is cheaper at night, and people are not using it to run things like air conditioning units, et cetera. That's why you have peak hours with consumers' energy, right? So energy, even if you're drawing it from the grid, is cheaper at night, and he has a 20 kilowatt wall in his house that does it for him, saves him money. That is not what these batteries would be used for. It is, but it's not serving an individual. The batteries would be drawing from the grid, and they would be supplying the grid, right? So it is a very real possibility that it would increase Comstock's electrical usage during off-peak hours, and none of those savings could be passed to, to any of the residents. That's exactly what some of the foreign countries are experiencing, where they are making their grid more efficient by storing energy for bursts, and it's something we should do, but it is something we should do in places like Coldwater. If we want to invest in, in, you know, in, in green energy here, we should invest in technology that generates energy, like solar panels, that does not store a large amount of potential energy. And 20 kilowatts in a home is, you know, a very reasonable amount of power. 20 kilowatts is a far, far cry from 400 megawatts. And if there's any sort of, you know, any sort of weight to the argument whatsoever that, you know, these batteries are safer because they ignite at higher temperatures, that is a true fact, but when you scale up the potential energy that's being talked about storing here, getting an extra 100 degrees and a failure, especially in the chain reaction, is easy to do. So it's, it's true fact, bad argument, and I want to make sure that the record's set straight there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robyn Burpee. I live in Park Township in St. Joseph County. Four weeks ago, I didn't even know what B-E-S-S stood for. In four weeks, I've joined a coalition of citizens across 10 townships in our communities that knew nothing about what BES was. My question, and in confidence, I say that you probably do due diligence to rectify and answer, why are all of these townships all at once discussing the same topic? And why did nobody know about it in our communities for months, perhaps years? If the answer is to repeal Public Act 233 and 235, why don't we do that? Why can't you, as a township, talk to Big Rapids, Saline, Covert, Mole, and say, "What are you doing? Why is this happening to us all at once?" Little Shop of Horrors has a plant, and that plant grows by eating things. That's AI data storage. Solar is a blanket covering it up. BES is the food, and data storage facilities take enormous amounts of energy. We can't even comprehend what that looks like. It's a problem, and it's a problem created by the entities that are worth billions of dollars. That has nothing to do with us, except in Michigan, we have water, we have open land, and the people in Coldwater don't want the BES there any more than we do here. And we have cold temperatures for nine months out of the year. They tried this in Arizona, they tried this in California, they depleted the water sources. Why are they here? Why is Lansing saying, "We need this here"? It's because they haven't done their due diligence to find out what exactly this computes to for our communities. So look behind the curtain. If the problem is in Lansing, then I deplore you guys to work with other townships, work with your county, and go to Lansing and say, "Stop the bill from being stalled in committee, the repeal bill, to be stopped in committee, and get it on the Senate floor. Start people talking about it. Talk to your communities. Go out there and make a community effort to figure out what's really going on."
Thank you.
Good evening again, Chris Barnes. You do have renewable energy right here in town. The Marlin Pond Dam was not built as a hydro dam, it was built as a coal fire plant. The dam was put there to cool the turbines. Now, there's a Chicago company, last I knew, cut a hole in the dam and put up, I believe it's two-megawatt generator. last I knew, cut a hole in the dam and put up, I believe it's two megawatt generator. So you do have green energy right here in town. So this is a good place for storing energy at night when that, uh, when that's producing, and it'll keep the peaker plant that's right next to it that's gas-fired offline. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any more public comment. I'll close public comment and move to the next item on our agenda, which is updates from other boards.
We haven't had a meeting, so I have nothing?
We haven't either, so I don't have anything either. Okay, train updates.
None.
Information, future action items?
Yes, our next meeting will be a special meeting with a joint meeting between the planning commission and moratorium committee that'll begin on 11/20, or November 20th, at 6:00 PM. Um, the goal of that meeting is another VAS workshop. The agenda is in the works. It probably will not be out until Monday morning. Um, there will be two items on there, actually, VAS workshop, and then at the request of Supervisor Martin, there will be a draft moratorium information packet for you all to review that will include, um, the letters revisions from CIP developer, along with the presentations from the moratorium committee dating back to April. So we had Attorney Thaw present. We had the MPSC come and present, Eagle, U of M. That'll all be in the packet. Um, the packet, at this point, is about 200 pages, so I will ax out the moratorium information packet. That'll be digital only, so that I don't have almost 1,000 pages of packet for you all. Um, looking for, our next meeting will be December 11th. Nothing on that docket as of yet. No applications come in. Oh, Redwood. Redwood. That's the only one so far. Um, and that is it. Thank you, guys. A four-hour meeting is no joke, so thank you all for hanging in there, and residents as well. Um, I do appreciate what Mr. Watts said. Um, there is a comment in our public comments spiel about keep comments clean and respectful, and I appreciate that the residents did that tonight. It is important to keep that in mind. The committee works super hard. The commission works super hard, staff, our attorney. Um, it's been, it's been a long year working on this, so I appreciate all you guys' effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning commission comments. James, you want to start us?
I have no comment at this moment.
Joseph?
No comment.
Bob?
No, sir. I'm good.
Amber?
All set. Thanks.
Sandy?
Nope, nothing. Thank you.
I'm good as well. We are adjourned.